Check, check. Get ready.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Cool.
Hey, hear me, Matt?
I can hear you.
All right, I'm driving. All right.
Okay, if everybody's ready, we'll call the June work session to order. Have the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lynn Falacco.
Here.
Joe Marmello.
Here.
Matt Crone.
Present.
Joe Polko. Jen Farley. Shane Ballyett.
Here.
Bill D. Francisco. Okay, thank you. Move on to citizens petitions. Do we have any at this time? Any citizen like to state anything?
Please remember to take yourself off mute if you're trying to talk and be on mute when you're not trying to talk. And this is the citizens portion.
Anyone going once, going twice? Okay, mayor? Do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Madam President, Matt Crone, could I ask a question to the mayor? Mayor Buddha, a few weeks ago, when we had the curfew in effect, there was a request from council to have a meeting with you regarding the police schedule pursuant to some discussions with the F L P in the last few weeks. Would you be willing to sit down with council and have a discussion regarding police matters?
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Okay, so we could do an executive session either before or after next week's regular meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Now, we'll move on.
Sorry, excuse me, Lynn. Couldn't, I'd just like to request that we do it before next week's meeting. In case we come up with anything we need to, you know, do at the meeting.
Yeah, that would be my preference as well. Yeah, the sooner the better.
That's all. Thank you.
Before as in right before the meeting or a prior day?
Anytime. That's the only time I can do it is 12:30 and 4:30 on Tuesday. And I'm aware of at this point.
Okay, we'll work on that after the meeting. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, engineer, I spoke with Dominic just before the meeting. He called with an update on the park streetscape. He received the bonding from the contractor. He's emailing forms to the office, Leanne, that you'll have to print out for signature that we need to take care of, and we're still waiting to hear back from PennDOT on the H O P. And same with the additional funds from the community development block grant. That is, as far as we know right now, they have not released anything to any municipality. They're just awaiting for a day, a release date. And lastly, Leanne, did we receive the 2021 Luzern County Community Development Block Grant paperwork to fill out? That's due in August.
We did not.
We did not. Okay, I'll check on that. All right, does anybody have anything else under engineer?
Where are, yes, I do. Where are the plans for our streetscape project? I don't know that I've seen anything.
Leanne, are there set in the office? I know they were brought to the meeting.
They were, and then Dominic took them.
Okay.
Okay, so I need to have him send them to me email, I guess, or something that nature. Okay, I'll talk to him. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to sit down and check that out also.
Well, I'm sure we can have a set for next week's meeting. That's no problem. All right, if nothing else, we'll go move on to the solicitor.
Okay, our emergency declaration will expire next, next meeting. So I know council's wishes are in that regard. We moved to green tomorrow in Luzern. Last Friday, we did have the Act 111 interest arbitration with the three arbitrators present. Lynn and Matt presented on behalf of the municipality. And Attorney Egan made his presentation, which was in the form of their binder exhibit booklet. What'll happen now procedurally, the three arbitrators will convene at least one executive session to discuss the multiple issues that surfaced. The one thing we do need to produce for the arbitrators would be information relative to the life insurances in place previous to arbitration and currently, as well as the disability coverages with policy. So hopefully somebody could get that together so I could circulate to the three arbitrators. And then we have the burning ordinance, which was briefly touched on, I think, by Councilman Marmello. I don't know what council's wishes will be in that regard if we're going to move forward, but there wouldn't, would need to be a motion to approve preparing an ordinance for further review in the future. That's it.
And do you, Attorney Branco, do you have the original ordinance?
I don't.
Okay, it's not very old. The way I understood it was that all the files were sent to your office. Is that correct? From the prior solicitor, do you know?
I don't believe I have a burning ordinance, but I will double check.
I mean, they're, they're definitely, one definitely exists.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead. That's all.
I will check. I will check if we do have a burning ordinance, but I went through the list of files that we did activate. I didn't see anything there at all.
Yeah, so this seems to be another one of those mysteries. I was with Kenny Winter from Code today. He doesn't have a copy of it currently. The fire chief doesn't have a copy of it currently. There are some books of ordinances up at the municipal building that don't seem to have it. It was definitely talked about at some point in time, but you know, talking about it and enacting it are two different things. And then enacting it and having a copy of it are again, two different things. So, you know, we may ultimately be in a situation where there is one, but you know, just due to all these circumstances, we just have to come up with a new one and try to have that supersede whatever might have been in place, which we don't even know what that ordinance number was.
Right.
But I think all parties do want to move ahead with this.
Okay, just keep, keep in mind too, if you all want to take a look at the zoning ordinance, there is a provision in zoning that deals with wood fire burners. But when I reviewed that after last meeting, it focuses strictly on an actual wood burning unit that would be housed maybe in a garage for heating from the primary residence. It does not address the issues that were raised by Councilman Marmello. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything for the solicitor?
Yeah, just Attorney Branco, what, what would your recommendation be just from a solicitor standpoint as far as the disaster? Declaration of disaster or?
I think almost every municipality is moving forward. I know municipalities I'm dealing with, we are moving and letting the declaration expire.
Would, would that, would, would we see any issues with, with funding or anything like that for purchases?
I don't believe so, but I think we need to monitor, monitor what's going on across the state for the next week or so before we get to the meeting and see how things develop, but the numbers continue to come down. And there's a strong movement now to, to moving obviously into green in almost all of our municipalities, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to committee reports, budget finance administration, our final TAN loan payment. We definitely need to consider a motion for that as our tax money is, both of it has been received. And that's 25,000 plus the interest, Leanne?
That is correct.
Anything else on that, Matt?
No, nothing as far as the TAN goes. That's it. I think we should get it paid off as soon as possible. It's a big one.
You want to give an update on the munisipay?
Yeah, so munisipay, we voted at the last voting meeting in May. This is for the credit card solution, including the credit card reader, because their solution would allow you to input credit cards directly into the web portal, but their credit card reader itself is optional. With munisipay, it's, it's a chip card reader, so it's, you could swipe or you could use the chip versus another vendor did not allow for the chip. All those chip cards can be swiped. We had a whole bunch of paperwork, which is really like preliminary stuff to say like, tell us about the borough and what the transactions would look like. And, you know, provide some bank account information and things like that. So Leanne completed all that paperwork. We confirmed it with munisipay. It looks good. They may come back to us with a question. If they do, we'll respond to it. We ordered the credit card reader for the $185 because that was part of the motion. And the implementation takes, for anybody who's not familiar with it, between 30 and 60 days to complete. So we haven't even started the clock on that. So, you know, business as usual, checks and money orders in the meantime. We do have the Dropbox up there and, and this solution might be up in, let's say, August, maybe? August or September, something like that. We'll be able to take credit cards, hopefully both online and in person. The next item is just set up a time to review fees for permits, dumpsters, moving landlord tenant and transient permit. So this was again, something that we talked about, I think, at the work session for May, but we didn't necessarily move forward with it. So, you know, anybody who's interested in that, Councilman Marmello comes to mind, Councilman Ballyett. Really, everybody had something to say about it. So, you know, we need to sit down with zoning code with the secretary, go through, see what our fee schedule looks like now, if it needs to be revamped at all, whether that's now or in the future. So, you know, let's get moving on that since it's, it's a carryover from previous meeting. Any questions on those two items before I go on to the last item?
Yeah, well, not really a question, but comment. I think we can, you know, we can move ahead, you know, if it's, if it's voted to do that with doing some things with the zoning and the permits, and then we have to kind of get into a discussion, I think, with Barry Isit about permits, how the numbers work with them before we can do anything on our own and all that stuff. But, you know, since it takes so long to kind of present something to the public, have them, give them their time to review, and then, you know, we vote on it, I think we, you know, we could probably move on some of it. Just not the fees, we do have to sit down and talk to them about what's going on, because I really don't understand it, to be honest with you. There's some things I, you know, I got, but I, it's just bits and pieces. I need to, to look into it a little bit more. So, and I think all of you guys would want to do the same. So, that's all.
All right. Just, just for you. Joe, just for you, Barry Isit, their, their fees are strictly inspection fees. We get, the borough receives on top of their inspection fees 30% administrative of whatever their costs are. And then there's a $4.50 fee that has to go to the state because every quarter they have to report any permit that's issued for the borough to the state and they have to pay the 4.50 fee.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I was aware.
It varies per job depending on what they have to inspect, be it electrical, be it, but they do have their own fee schedule. And we get 30% on top of that and they collect the 4.50 for the state.
Right, okay, thank you. The, the issue is where we are inspecting and we're not inspecting and we should be inspecting. And I don't know how you inspect after something's done. We've, you know, when a roof is put on, a whole brand new roof, was it the whole roof, was it part of the roof? How much was their cost to put the roof on? Are they charging a percentage of the roof project? There's a lot of things that just aren't adding up and that we're kind of, I think, losing out on, you know, our 30% because the job is not being done. So I understand.
You have Ken Fenstermacher's number from?
Yes, I've, I've been, I actually just, I've been talking to Joey and Ken and, you know, trying to express my concern as to how do you look at something that's, you know, after the fact? I can't look inside your walls.
No, I mean Ken from Isit. Have you spoken to him?
Yes, yes, I have. I, yeah, that's who I meant. So we're, we're, but he was kind of out of work too, so he was.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody, so he didn't get smothered when he came back in. But, yeah, we're, we're talking, they were supposed to meet today and I just, I sent Joe a text early to see what happened and then we'll get into it more, but just so.
Very good.
We can, we can take it from there. Thanks.
Okay, Matt, the last one?
Yeah, so the last one has to do with the property taxes. All right, so we talked about this a few times. The first time we just talked about it, the second time there was an attempt to make a motion, the motion died for lack of a second. We got an email from the county about property taxes. It, well, really it was an email to the, the, the tax collector saying, you know, don't charge any late fees after June 18th today. So today is the end of the, the face period. Except for Freeland Borough and one other municipality. So apparently everybody got on board with changing the face date out to August date, except for Freeland and one other. In the meantime, the tax collectors have received guidance from the county in terms of how to split the payments. And we've heard from multiple people familiar with tax collection that it's an absolute tedious, confusing, difficult, complex nightmare to do this. So, that being the case, you know, we have the potential for there to be some kind of a math issue in the calculation and in the inputting of it, and then we end up losing out on money potentially. So I think we need to revisit this. We need to sit down. Tax collection has definitely slowed based on the numbers that I saw. We collected about $7,000 as part of the last deposit, between $7,000 and $8,000. And we still have an amount outstanding. So for the sake of making it easier on our tax collector and eliminating any of this confusion for them and for the taxpayers, someone may want to make a motion at the next meeting to extend the date. It's okay that today is the 18th and we'd be extending it after the fact. We would have to make an adjustment for anybody who made a payment between now and that period of time. But it's something to consider. Does anybody have any thoughts on any of that?
Well, I made the motion last time. I'm willing to make it again to extend the face. Anybody else?
And that's, no, that's all I have on budget. Oh, go ahead.
I don't, I'm sorry. Go ahead, whatever. You can go. I, I just don't, I don't wish to extend it, so.
Okay, well, we can't vote anyway, yeah.
Yeah, we'll cross that, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. I, yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, this just came up like in the last day or so. And, Leanne, do you have any? Well, you know, we'll talk about it, whatever. And we'll try to get some details on the process, because I know it's one thing for me to say it's difficult process, but it's another thing to, you know, maybe see the instructions or something like that. So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
And maybe, maybe one little thing we could look at is to, you know, look where we are this year as compared to last year. If we're pretty much the same or relatively close, I mean, that's just the way it is. Then people, doesn't matter if we extend or not extend. People are going to do what they do because they did it last year. So I might want to talk to Mr. Laputka about, you know, where we stand with collection, you know, if we got 80% at this time last year and, you know, we got 80% at this time this year, then we're pretty much right on schedule anyway. So.
Leanne, could you pull a report on taxes collected last year, year to this date and this year?
Yes, I will have it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Leanne, it's Joe Polko. I'm, I'm here. I was having issues with my phone. I don't know if, if you knew I was on or not.
I got you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for budget and finance?
No, I'll probably have more next week for the regular meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to police and safety. Anything for police and safety?
Does anybody hear from the police?
Committee have anything?
I do not.
Okay, if nothing, we'll move on to code.
Well, wait, I would like to, may I say something about?
Go ahead.
On the police, I'm kind of requesting that we have a little bit, you know, to talk to the committee here. A little more police presence at a couple of intersections in town, which I've witnessed are, I mean, not a couple, but it just happens to be where I was. I'm sure most of them are like this. Little bit more police presence sitting in the car and pulling some people over, running for stop signs. So if I could discuss that with Mr. Joe and Mr. Shane about talking to them about that, I would appreciate it because it's really, stop signs don't exist in Freeland anymore. They're just stuck there for, for display at this point. And somebody's going to get killed sooner or later. So if we can talk to them about their presence on the road, that would be great.
Absolutely. Would you, would you like to talk after the, after the meeting, Joe, or?
Yep, that'll work for me.
Well, well, we're going to have a meeting with, we're going to have a meeting with the mayor sometime between now and next Thursday, right? Should we parlay this or is this a pre-meeting meeting?
Well, I mean, that's, that's more of a, I mean, that's more of the scheduling issue and really his, I mean, as far as I know, he's, you know, it's just to discuss with them getting out on the street more. So, you know, if he wants to attend, if all, everybody wants to talk about it after the meeting, that's fine. But, you know, at this point, we're talking schedule with him. And now we're talking just a little more police presence, and that's more of a committee thing than the mayor thing, so.
All right, then if we can move on to code.
Yeah, I, I could take some of this and Joe Marmo, feel free to chime in. So Kevin Polko, we voted to hire him as an additional part-time code enforcement officer. We had a departure in December and we're operating with one guy since then. Kevin was sworn in since the last meeting and he's actually begun his training. I think he worked at least, this might be the fourth day that he's working on a Monday and Thursday schedule, closely supervised by Ken Winter. And from all accounts, I hear everything's going pretty well so far. So uniforms, Kevin needs a couple shirts, so he's working on that. We do have budget for it. So, you know, it's going to be, wow, $50 to get three shirts with that say code enforcement on them or something like that. So he's out pricing it, getting some of the stuff done. He'll come back to it, but that's an expected expenditure. Now, we haven't been doing occupancy inspections. Real estate was kind of shut down. Now we're starting to get a little bit closer to normal. So occupancy inspections are one of the things that actually requires our officers to go into a property. Now we're starting to get a little bit closer to normal. So occupancy inspections are one of the things that actually requires our officers to go into a property. So they have requested some personal protective equipment in the form of gloves, latex gloves, masks and sanitizer. Size large or extra large gloves, which are hard to come by right now. A little bit, but they, they are available. Masks are a little bit easier and there's some sanitizer out there. So, I mean, the question is, is, you know, as part of our emergency declaration, we are able to make emergency purchases related to the COVID. This is directly related to the COVID. We do have the one thousand dollar donation from Garden Chen Restaurant, which they said was intended for PPE. So do we have to wait and vote on a purchase next week and then wait longer for the stuff to come? Or is everybody pretty comfortable with us going out there and shopping for this stuff and getting it sooner so that these guys get up and running?
I consider that supplies. You know, that daily supplies, they need that to do their job. Same as you.
Yeah, especially under the declaration. I don't see that being an issue.
Yeah, I think the declaration pretty much specifically gives us that authority to do that.
And common sense.
All right, so I'm going to try to move ahead on that as soon as possible. Sometimes like on Amazon, there's gloves available, but they're not going to come till July. So, you know, it's tough. Masks and sanitizer are a little bit easier. And we're going to try to make, you know, small incremental purchases. We're not talking about spending a thousand dollars at one time. But we'll get these guys some stuff so that they can be safe and keep doing that thing. So, thank you.
Mark, Mark's wholesale did have gloves.
Did they have larger?
The last time I was there, they, they had.
I checked the sizes, Lynn, but they did have them.
Okay.
Are they back to the boxes though? Because the last time I was there, they had like a little package that had like cardboard at the top and it had. Like ten gloves in it that were really terrible. So, I mean, I. Yeah, they used to, I always used to buy gloves there, but it's been tough there. Now, I think I found one on Amazon at sixteen dollars. Which is a little pricey compared to a year ago at this time for a hundred gloves. So if we buy a couple boxes of that. And get a couple masks and then we find, you know, gallon sanitizer, hopefully we're only talking about like. A hundred bucks to have them have like a thousand and some gloves and at least get out a couple months.
Well, if you can't find them there, if you can't find them there, I can go through Verbonnet's. I'm, I'm almost positive we can get them through McKesson where we get our supplies.
Team supply should also have some too.
They're, they're definitely cheaper than sixteen bucks a box.
Thank you.
Matt, you, Matt, these guys, these guys at least have, have PPE for, for the time being, correct?
Well, I mean, they've been wearing their, their masks. They have medium sized gloves. That, you know, don't really fit very well, but they're not doing the occupancy inspections yet. They're getting ready to do the occupancy inspection. So that's the point in time where they would want to have the proper stuff. And use it more regularly. So they have something for right now that's not optimal. But it, it's, you know, we're just trying, maybe we're a little bit behind, but we're trying to catch up here.
Yeah. Well, if we can't get them quickly, I'll, I'll see if I can get the ambulance to donate some, I'm sure that won't be a problem.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to need more, so can we just have the first, and we'll pay it, we'll pay cost for it. You know, it doesn't have to be a donation, but it's really about speed more than anything and quality. So if we could get the first, you know, box to get us started and we'll pay for it and then we'll worry about stocking up afterwards.
I, I don't think that, I'm sure Wilson's on here. I'm sure that won't be a problem.
I'm on here, it won't be a problem. We'll, we'll take care of it for yous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're going to move on to zoning. Is that everything for code, Matt and Joe?
Yeah, that's it for, for, for this time. We'll have a report next week.
Yeah, and, and again, that kind of relates with the, you know, there's some things with codes and zoning. We're trying to work out here with who's. So at this point, we're good until I talk to Mr. Flanagan and Ken a little bit, Ken, both Kins actually. More in depth. I'll have a little bit more hopefully next week. Now for zoning, that's kind of my thing here. We're talking with the, I guess I can refer to. Mr. Attorney Branco about where, has there been any progress with the, for next week for? Any of this, for the permit and business license ordinance that I, I just, I sent out. To kind of adjust it for Freeland.
Oh, you, Joe, is that Director Command? You were breaking up.
Yes, sir. You were out goofing off. Don't lie to me. You were goofing off.
No.
Trust me, I'm on this computer. I'm on this computer all day. I do a lot of that, sorry.
I did not move on it yet until we have a majority of council telling us to move forward on that. So if council wishes, they, they could put a motion together and that next meeting and I'll, I'll put a. An ordinance together, but we are talking, we're not talking about a mercantile tax. We are talking strictly about a registration and licensing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I thought that's, you know, that's something we needed to have together. To review so we can vote on it because if not, we're back again another month.
Yeah.
So.
But if we, if we don't vote to prepare it, then it's a cost incurred to the borough.
Exactly. And that's, I, I've been through this in, in previous municipalities where. We take action at the request of a council person and.
I mean, that, that's why I gave you the ordinance. I mean, it's, it's almost as simple as changing Butler Township to, I mean, there's four lines in there. I think that. So, so, I, I mean. You know, we're, we're right back another. I mean, this, this is, this is getting way old of how we just off and off. I mean, just say now, we don't want to do it and then we'll just have people doing whatever they want with their businesses and their permits and stuff and no permits. And we'll lose out on all the money that every town around here is making. I don't like to nickel and dime people to death, but. Fact is, if I'm going to go to Weatherly Borough and they're going to charge me this same, you know, make me pay these fees. Or I'm going to go to Butler Township and they're going to charge me these fees, why are we not doing the same thing? I mean, it's, it just makes no sense. So, and here we are. It's going to be June, which is to be having the vote next week is to. Have, having it had prepared from last week and then vote on it next week to present to the public. So. You know, I, I just thought that was the, the whole idea was to prepare this for next session. And then we're going to take, we're going to review it and vote on whether we want to give it to the public or not.
Yeah, I'd, I'd certainly like to go over this stuff today if we have the, if they have the opportunity to. And we can have this prepared for the next thing. I, I also like to say, I have a business in Houston and every year I pay a. Pay a hundred dollars to the city to just have my business in the, in the city, as does every other, other business in the city. And this is, that's standard for anywhere. It's just, it's crazy that we don't have that here.
And, and I think there's many other things that go along with that, like, you know, certain inspections and stuff that can be done because you do have a business. And it's just, this isn't Freeland like it used to be. So we've got to crack the whip here. And, you know, start reining these people in or we're just going to have a worse than it's, worse than it already is, so.
It was actually very recent that we had a business where we had to, we had to, we had to meet and decide whether or not we were going to get a warrant for code enforcement to go in there to look at it. Whereas if we had business, business licenses and business inspections annually, we, we would have known everything that's inside that building.
Yeah, for the most part, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they can get away with it for a year, but after that, we're in there.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, then, I would recommend, I would recommend next Thursday making a motion to prepare and advertise it.
But that's exactly what, you know, should have happened last meeting, which we were discussing and here we are, we're.
But, but there wasn't a motion made. I mean, we have to motion to advertise it.
We can't, no, no, I, I think, there's a little, we have.
Look, if you, if you want to prepare it exactly as is. Then just circulate that one again and we can all read into it that it's Freeland and.
Well, and there.
To be advertised.
Yeah, that's my point. It's like, we don't want, I want to be able to advertise it next week. And not say, we're going to get it, we're going to vote to prepare it next week.
I said prepare and advertise.
Prepare and advertise. And there's a few things in there that, you know, that's why we have an attorney. He's going to be the expert and tell us we can or can't do this. And we have to tweak it this way because we're a borough. I don't think there's much difference in this situation for borough and the township. I've looked into it. But again, I didn't go to law school, so. Let's do that then. We're, we're going to prepare it and we're going to get to review it and then vote to advertise for next, next week. If that makes sense, that sound good, that correct?
So am I to take the steps to prepare it before the motion?
Well, I mean, we have to have, you know, to make the motion to put it in the paper, we have to have something prepared. So I don't understand that's, you know, I can't. I, I can't, we can't put in the paper next week if, we can't vote on it next week if it's not prepared. So it's got to get prepared sooner or later for us to look at it to see if we actually want to put it in the paper, if we actually agree with it and we're going to put it out there to the public. So.
So that makes sense.
I understand that we have a lot of items on the agenda today, but I mean, this is the work session and, and if we have time today, I would certainly like to go over this so that we do have it prepared. And then, and then work forward in there.
We, what.
I mean, we've all had the chance to check out the, the one from Butler that, that Joe had passed around. I just.
So at this point, we need to. Sorry, Shane.
No, it's, I just don't want, I just don't want to, you know, there's so many times that we make something that we wish we would change something. I just, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We all agree with it. We don't have any other additions. And then certainly I'm all for, for going forward with it.
So, and, and not to, and to have it ready for next, you know, at some point prior to next week so we can look. At it and put a vote, put it to a vote as to whether we're going to have this actually be put in the paper.
If, but if that was the case, then a motion should have been made last month to prepare it.
But we, well, I mean, we discussed that. I mean, it's just, you know, I, I kind of.
But it is an expense. I mean, it's.
I understand it's an expense, but the bottom line is in two weeks, we'll make that expense back by getting people to pay business license fees. I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't like to spend money, but this is, you know, we're losing, you know, if I have to spend ninety to make a thousand, I'm going to shoot, if I have to spend ninety to make a hundred. I'm going to, you know, take the ten dollar profit. That's not a bad deal. That's ten percent on my money, over ten percent. So. We're, we're going to, you know, we're going to sit and let this, you know. Run the wheel and just keep turning and turning. Nothing's going to get done, so. And I just, I thought that.
Right, but. Alright, so.
We get it prepared for the next.
Well, well, I, I mean, listen, we need to stop talking about what we did, what we did, what we did, because at the end of the day, we didn't make a motion. So the, the, the normal thing to do, this is not any kind of emergency, is. Let's make the motion tomorrow night to prepare it. And then we're, we're one month behind schedule through fault of everybody and we just move on and then by July, maybe we have it in effect. And, and we just stop rehashing.
It won't be in July because we have to put it out there and then by the time, but we have. I don't understand why we just can't, you know, decide we're going to prepare it for next Thursday.
Because it's not a voting session.
Because we can't, it's, it's a work session, okay?
We talked about it last week and it's.
But we did not, you did not make a motion on it.
I, you know what? I understand that you guys don't want to, because I'm talking to the attorney. And I'm costing this money by trying to make this town better and you don't want to spend the ninety dollars or whatever it is an hour to take this, to, to get this done. But this is just this on and on nonsense of we're just going to roll and roll and roll and nothing's going to get done.
Joe, 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 you did not make the motion last time. So you, there's a lot of finger pointing coming away from you. Like, yes, I read the thing, it came out. I, I would like to take more time to reconsider it. I got tied up with other things. Procedurally speaking, the proper thing to do is make a motion to prepare it, which we could do at the next meeting. And then, and nobody's saying they don't want to have it. I didn't hear that come out of anybody's mouth. It's just a procedural thing to do it the right way.
But it can be prepared and ready for us to look.
But to, to spend that kind of money should require a majority vote. And that's all I'm saying. If, that, if that's how you felt, there should have been a motion last month.
To spend that, okay. All right, we'll put it off another month.
So moving on.
Make the motion here.
No, we cannot make a motion.
No, but, but all last week then, what? The, all last, the, the last time was just a waste of even bringing that up because we just want to push things off.
Then you have to make a motion. So move along, go ahead. Next one, historical.
Well, actually, we didn't talk about manufactured homes. I guess we'll have to bring that up again next week regarding. The present zoning is, you have to have, I believe, ten acres. I think I sent this out. Ten acres for a manufactured community and then. What, per net acre, you can have, I believe it is four manufactured homes on there. That's in our present zoning. I'd like to. I mean, think about this because I'm going to, you know, put it up for a vote next week to have that amended to making it. Changing the acreage on it. I will send an email out to everybody as to what my preference is. And see if you guys agree or have better ideas. And also, the zone, the. I know we discussed how we have to by law do certain things with zoning or we're snob zoning or something of that nature. So I would like to present that. In order to have a manufactured home in Freeland without the. As present community, just as, you know, you want to spot a land, you want to put a manufactured home on there. I would like to make the requirements be that that manufact, that home can only go on. If you have one point five acres or greater.
There are, there are only certain zones it could be in though right now.
Can, can I intervene quick? Just so everybody's on the same page here. Everyone should take a look at the definitions of the zoning ordinance. Manufactured homes are absolutely one hundred percent different than modular homes. They are defined differently. Manufactured homes essentially target a mobile home park. So the acreage is focused. On mobile homes and. Regulating mobile homes and where they can go. Modular homes are permitted uses in certain zones. And modular homes are specifically defined in the ordinance. So you have a distinction. And I know, Joe, you were kind of. Interchanging both of them. As one, I think last time we started to chat about this thing. So everyone should really focus in on the definitions first. Look at your schedules as far as permitted uses second. And decide what we're going to do here. And keep in mind that if a zoning amendment is initiated by the governing body versus planning commission. Which I, I understand we have a planning commission, but nothing, no one is panel. We still have significant procedural avenues to go through. Once you make your proposed amendments, have a proposed ordinance, it has to go to county planning for comment. At least thirty days before a public hearing. Then you have to convene a public hearing. You have to post the properties that are affected. So there's significant procedural avenues first you have to go through for zoning changes. But again, regarding the manufactured versus the, the modular, they are absolutely separate and distinct existences in. Our municipality under your existing ordinance.
Okay, so, so with that said, then I'll, Matt, you want to type on there manufactured slash modular homes. Would like to.
No, isn't it manufactured slash mobile? And then modular is by itself?
Yes.
Well, that's what I mean, to, to include both of them. So it's.
Well, I have manufactured slash mobile.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that. Well, I, you changed something while I was looking at something else. Okay, so with that said. This is, so, so would be a manufactured mobile modular home you could place if you have up to an acre and a half. And another borough in the state of Pennsylvania has exactly that. That ordinance. So I don't think that should be a, a large problem. And some people may think that, you know, that's not a big issue, but. It's, you know, it just, there are places where that can happen. So I'm trying to avoid that and. Tax purposes, we probably get a little bit more money for a stick built home, but, so I'd like to consider that. Now, the R two, R three, et cetera. Regarding the. Now, there are plenty of homes unless people are paying. You would walk by a home and you see five meters on there, you kind of know that there's more than two apartments in it, in the R two area of town. There's more than two apartments. Two apartments in it, in the R two area of town, there's more than two apartments. So unless somebody's, you know, lighting up other parts and wanna pay the meter for you, that would be crazy, but who knows, so. Why we have their prior zoning ordinance for comparison now? We did our, our zoning ordinance was two thousand fif- two thousand sixteen, it was enacted, so. If. If someone has, the reason I have, uh, prior zoning ordinance for comparison, Lynn, you may know this answer or. Somebody may know this answer, uh, what was the zoning ordinance prior to that and does the person who? Is, was there a zoning ordinance, does the person who have, uh, who has five houses, five apartments in their, you know, duplex now? Uh, do they, i- if if it said it was okay back then, then fine, there's nothing we can do, but if they said it was not okay and they did that. And it's still R two, you know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to get at here is, you know, we obviously can't tell somebody who's had it there. If they were allowed to, then we can't make them change now, but if we look back. Um, there's, and and this, this, there's a larger component to this, like parking and just, uh. Taxes, schools, all kinda things that we have to keep in in mind here when people start turning all their houses into. That are R two into R fives and then, you know, we have no place to park. And it's just as bigger zoo than it already is in town, uh, that's gonna be a problem, so we gotta start cracking down on this if it's possible. So how does that work, Mr. Joe, uh, attorney, Joe?
Uh, well, wait, wait, can I just, uh, take a step back, I know, uh, Matt, if you wanna add more as I speak, okay? What I'm gonna ask everybody to do, uh, in light of Joe's comments, take a look at section five oh three of the zoning ordinance. And in there, you'll see the chart. Manufactured homes, I'm gonna call them mobile homes right now, uh, for, you know, the, just because. Mobile homes are not permitted at all in an R one, R two, B one, B two, B three. Nor I one. A mobile home is permitted, I'm just talking about a home, is permitted in an R three and a C one. If they're not permitted in those specific zones, they must go before the zoning hearing board. For a variance to put a mobile home on a property. Uh, so we gotta be careful about what we're doing with the acreage.
Correct, cuz then we're pulling it into other districts.
Correct.
Go against, Joe, did you have a chance to review that chart?
What, the zoning?
Ordinance that lists every single possible structure in every single district we have and what's allowed and what isn't.
I'm looking at it right now and how does, how does, uh, how do we risk? Putting in, uh, if you can't go into an R two zone with a a mobile home, then you can't go in no matter what the acreage is, you can't go in.
That's correct.
They, they would, they would have to go to the zoning board for a use variance to say, hey. We can't use our property consistent with the allowances of the ordinance, please grant us a hardship. Um, allowance to put this on.
Excuse me, Joe, hold that thought because, uh, I, there's a couple guys, uh, on this call that really need to, we need to consider. And Lynn, you and I talked about this, uh, we need to consider. And request that maybe they could just get on our zoning board because if we don't have one. Uh, that could present problems if people do go to the zoning board, we don't have one. Um, so I I understand Lynn and I, you and you and I talked about how we're not sure when their term ran out and stuff like that. So for the next meeting, we kinda really need.
I I think we need to have a zoning committee meeting, you and Matt and myself prior to this next meeting.
Yeah, and then we can fly, and then we can go out and create and plead for somebody to get on there for us.
Yeah, let's have a committee meeting prior to the next meeting, okay, I'll go that afterward.
Then, the only thing I'm gonna bring to everyone's attention while we're talking about the manufactured modular type of situation. A mobile home community is permitted nowhere. It's a conditional use in an R three, conditional use would have to come before the governing body, us. For a hearing. So if somebody wanted to.
I mean, I I don't, that's not how I read it when, so maybe I'm just misinterpreting it.
Yeah, con- conditional use would be us.
One way, uh, you said mobile home community?
A park, a mobile park.
Okay, which is different than a manufactured home?
No, they, no, if, when you look at the definition of manufactured home. You're gonna see that it includes mobile homes, and I think that's what they were trying to target, basically. But they expanded the definition manufactured homes so as not to be discriminatory.
Okay, so manufactured and mobile are the same and we are, uh, manufactured home communities, the minimum lot area shall be three acres. Which should be under single ownership, the lot shall have minimum width of whatever, maximum density shall be four homes or dwelling units per net acre. Um, so. If you have three acres, you can have twelve units on, is that what I'm? Which must be under single ownership, the lot shall have minimum width of hundred fifty feet, the maximum density shall be four per net acre.
Are you on the, uh, supplemental regulations, Joe, give, give me your section.
I'm on page ninety-three, manufactured home community.
Yeah, hang on, I'm, I was just looking at the schedules here, uh, manufactured home communities. Yep, that's the, that's the su- so you've got, when, when an application comes before the council to put a mobile home park in. They've gotta come before us and these are the criteria, the the objective criteria that they must comply with in order to even be considered. But we could attach other conditions as well.
Okay, so, um, when you say attach other conditions, what do you mean, can I make that twelve acres?
Um, no, the, well, the minimum is three acres.
Yeah, can I make that a minimum twelve acres?
Ten point six. If if the ordinance provides that, and I didn't get that deep into the research again, cuz I know we only touched on the general discussion of this, but. But if the committee, if you're gonna get together with the committee, you wanna look at the supplemental regs, you wanna look at the charts. And then you wanna go back to, uh, those provisions that discuss. The procedure before a hearing board on variances and on conditional uses. So variances will go to the zoning board, conditional uses, uh, come before, uh, council. And those criteria, I'm trying to see if I could pinpoint them quickly. They're in the back of the ordinance in the one thousand sections, I believe. Yeah, if you look at page one thirty-nine.
Okay.
There's the other items that they have to comply with, uh, again, I'm strictly hypothetically speaking about a mobile home park. You take a look at what you were just looking at, Joe, take a look at this ten fifteen and take a look at the charts. And you put all those together plus the definitions, um, and that's your, that's your objective criteria for review.
Okay, so. And we'll talk about that, the committee, and for those of you who are out there saying, where are we gonna find three acres, trust me, there, it's around. But you did say there are certain, uh, areas, uh, that can't see, was C one, one of them? And I may have said there, commercial.
The only place that a mobile home can come, a mobile home park could come into any. Any district. It's who hears the application. R one, R two, B one, B two, B three, C one, I one. I'll go before the zoning board. R three comes before us, so when. Uh, the attorney and his planning, um, uh, consultant, whom I su- I'm assuming was Jack Verally. Put this thing together. They, their concern was for the R three zone, that's where they believed. That if this was gonna come into the municipality, this is where where it's gonna be. So, and I don't have the map in front of me, so I don't know where this R three is. Plus, they may have included that there, just so not to be exclusionary.
Right, and there's, and if you change the acreage, you solve some of those problems and. There is an R two area where this could come into play that, uh, they'd be crazy to do it, but, you know, crazier things have happened, so.
They can still request a hearing though.
Sure, absolutely.
Right, but, you know, and I'm looking out for the neighbors of that, uh, place and, uh, what kinda problems that would cause, so. We'll talk about that.
Yeah.
We can, we can go on, and then historical district ordinance, so, um, did you have any, uh? Ideas on that, Mr. Joe, or anything regarding that?
Not at this, but I I I think, are you in possession of the city of Hazelton's overlay district? We already have a overlay district now, a a business overlay. We just gotta pinpoint the parameters of where you want to go. Um, and then a- again, it's, it's gonna be the same zoning ordinance procedure. Um, but normally what we do is an overlay map, so if you have a zoning map now for. C three downtown and you're gonna overlay and make it a historical area, we've gotta have, I guess, Dominic. Um, uh, on board with us to help us with the engineering. Or the drawing to scale of an overlay map to to pinpoint what we want, but if if everybody. Goes online, you could take a look at the city of Hazelton's that we did, yeah, I'm gonna say about five, six years ago, so.
Okay.
But that, that's a comparison there.
Cause, I mean, it's, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel, but, you know, as all it keeps going through my head, many other things and, uh, regarding. Center Street is, everybody who used to complain about, look at Diamond Avenue with all the satellite dishes and how nice it used to be. And that's just one thing, that's the start and, um. You know, there's many other things that I think people should be concerned about what it looks like down there, so we can look at that and then. Uh, hopefully not reinvent the wheel again and just go on and make something good for this town, so, but it is comparable, I mean, city, borough.
Um, it 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 encompasses a heck of a lot bigger area than you're, what you're talking about, but.
But they're not, you know, I know how boroughs are a little unique and townships are unique and cities are unique, but we can look at that and kinda take, you know.
Oh, sure, you could get, you could get a flavor for how to do it.
Okay, alright, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, anything else, Matt?
Uh, well, no, I'm not doing the zoning stuff, but I, I guess this is for Joe, is that. The only material that I know of that I have in my hands is the Butler Township Business License one.
Right.
Um, so if there's materials to distribute, please take care of that.
We, I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Or else you get what you get.
Moving on to EMA.
Good evening, everyone, how are we tonight?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, um, real quick, um, the county switched over its task force, they are now part of the Northeast Counter Task Force Group. It consists of ten counties, they are gonna be set, uh, setting up a training session after July first. Uh, for all EMA coordinators, um, to basically take the training. It's basically the rained out program, but it's ran through the county, it's no cost to the borough or the residents. Um, once I have the training complete, um, we can get it set up, it'll be like an emergency alert to the, to, to the community. Um, but I'll have more information once, once I get trained on it. That's about it.
Thank you.
Well, Wilson, Wilson, I'm sorry, was that July first date?
Yeah, it's after July first, they didn't pinpoint a date, they just, uh, I gotta send an email to them.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure I had it right, and and, um, to that end, you mentioned rained out, right? So we found out that rained out only had like two hundred and some people signed up. So the key thing for the public to take away from this is, this is only effective if you take responsibility. To sign up for it or download it or whatever you have to do. So don't just think that it's gonna magically happen.
They, they did send out flyers and that, on- once we have the training done, they, they did send out flyers that were to post to the public. Uh, to get everybody signed up, so we can put that on the Facebook page, uh, post it to Borough Building and get it out to the public. Once we have the training and everything in place on it.
Great.
Yeah, and I have the app, I have the app for Loser and County. So people can start downloading it now because it sounds like it's finally gonna move ahead and then there'll be a Freeland option eventually.
Okay, anything else for EMA?
I just wanna say, Wilson, you're doing, again, I can't say it enough, you're doing a great job with the, with the Facebook page, and just wanna remind everybody who's listening today. Um, and on the meeting, uh, to make sure you give that page a follow, there's, there's very good quality information on there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to streets and sanitation.
Alright, so I'll go through this quickly cuz some of it'll be on the report for next week, so Burbank Street and Swobie Street, we had a hole that was opening up. Um, John worked with, uh, PennDOT, they came out, they assessed it, PennDOT tore it up. PennDOT figured out that there was bags of rocks in there, it was not bags of money. Um, they figured out that they found, um, solid ground on either side of it, they filled it back in and they repaved it. So the cones are gone, everything's gone and it's back up and running and thank you to PennDOT, it didn't cost the borough anything. Um, street sweeping and sidewalk washing was completed, so street sweeping, compliance was not good in terms of. Folks moving their cars, it was advertised in the paper, it was on Freeland Borough Council official dot blogspot dot com. Um, it even ended up on Facebook and and yet in spite of all of that, you know, folks still didn't get the message, so. Um, we didn't give out any tickets, but, um, I don't know, Friday, si- uh, Friday in the business district. We've always, uh, cleaned from, uh, Walnut Street down to the Borough Line, so there's no parking on Friday mornings between six AM and eight AM. That was part of our advertisement, there are signs, there have always been signs about the street sweeping, we're gonna maybe add some additional signs. But there, there, there will be tickets eventually, um, and I wanna thank the Streets Department and especially the Fire Department. For the sidewalk washing, uh, that was after hours, six to eight PM at night. Um, for the, the firefighters to be dragging those big heavy hoses all the way from the Fire Department. Down to the light and then from the light down to the Borough Line, they were sweating and they did a great job and I think it looked really good, so thanks to everybody for that. Pot, so with the street sweeping being done, as much as it was done, with the asphalt plants being reopened, with the coronavirus. Situation, uh, it's time to start talking about pothole patching and the possibility of that coming as soon as Monday. Um, but I'm gonna set that aside for now, move on, um, weed killer. We, uh, purchased a weed killer from over at Tractor Supply, this weed killer is actually safe for the areas of barns and farms and things like that. So, um, that, we spray that in the ditch down by the Delacrosse and also on part of Center Street where it's very difficult to weed whack. Without hurting somebody's vehicle, so that was taken care of, but it's, it's nothing that requires any kinda hazmat or anything like that, it's over the counter stuff.
Matt, do you, do you have the recycling? There, I'm sorry, there wa- there was a question from the public about, uh, about whether or not that's, that's dog safe for being in the park, if they should be concerned with it, um, is that okay for, for like?
Well, it didn't, it didn't get that, it didn't get done at the park, but just as I said, uh, the stuff is called RM forty-three and it's used on farms. Um, in barns, around farm buildings and such, so as long as it doesn't get sprayed into anybody's mouth, it's perfectly fine.
Okay, I, can I, can I add something to that, please, um, we, we need to look into this because, um. In order to use weed killer, now whether this is, I don't know anything about the stuff you're talking about, but, um. In order for us to spray it apart, we need to be, we need to have a certification, the person who's putting the weed killer down. And we also need to, um, kinda put those little flags in the ground saying that weed killer was put in here. Uh, I don't know, um, if, yeah, again, I don't know the stuff you're using, but, uh, I would think that, uh. You know, this is something we need to look into because by law, we need to have the person putting it down, uh, certified. And, uh, we need to definitely advertise that it was put down for not only dogs, but, uh, I don't know, kids who eat grass too. Um, or, so, so. Who was, how are we gonna go about this because I don't wanna take any chances on this being something where it's gonna come back to haunt us. And I know it's been done for a hundred years here that we just put the weed killer down, uh, but. We have not been doing it according to the law.
Well, this, this chemical is not applicable for anything that requires the certification. We don't use the stuff like the Angelo Brothers uses or anything like that.
Well, how, how, who, who told us that it's not, who told us where we don't need it, certification? Did we just say that or did we actually ask, uh, the, uh? Appropriate people who enforce this.
The Streets Department is familiar with the requirements for chemicals. And certifications and things like that, now, with that said, to your point. Now, with that said, to your point, do we get people certified just for the sake of them being certified? And they might not ever use that certification? Sure, fine. That, that's okay. Better to have it than not. But in this instance here, there's nothing to be concerned about.
You know, I don't, I don't mind them not being it, but it's, what's the name of the stuff again that you said?
RM forty-three.
R M as in?
Right here on the screen, RM forty-three. It's used for farm premises, farm yards, um, agricultural uncultivated areas, maintenance of wildlife openings. And it's available over the counter at Tractor Supply.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I did, I did quick search that up and, uh, apparently two hours after, after application, after it dries, um, it's safe for, for pets and stuff like that and people.
Okay. All right.
Recycling truck had a check engine light on. We hooked up a, uh, uh, sensor to it. It was another fuel injector. The fuel injector is about 40 bucks. It's sitting in a box on John's desk written, ready to get fixed. And then we'll check the codes on it again, hopefully clear it out. It's great that our guys can do those kind of repairs themselves without having to send the vehicles out. Um, the air filter and the oil.
What do we use that recycling truck for? What does that?
Um, they use it for stuff that they wanna throw on the back and the dump truck is too high. So, um, you know, sometimes when they're moving some of the equipment. Unfortunately, there's, you know, we have the truck and, um, it, since it was bought under a grant, we can't really necessarily, uh, repurpose it or sell it or anything. It's a, it's a really nice truck. It's got really low miles on it, but, uh.
I mean, I was wondering why we're putting a fuel injector in it because I just don't see it out much. So, I mean, as long as they're using it for something, then fine.
Yeah, it's good for moving lawn mowers sometimes and weed whackers and things like that. It doesn't get much. I think it only has 8,000 miles on it and we've had it for several years. But I'm still working on the vehicle inventory. Uh, air filter and the oil filter were purchased for the street sweeper. That's an annual service thing, which again, our guys do that kinda service on our vehicles. Uh, we needed a new set of brushes, but we just, uh, swept 18 miles plus of road for the last set of brushes. So for 275 bucks divided by 18 miles, that came to about $15 a mile. And, uh, you know, they did sweep it, so they're gonna go out and buy some new brushes. Um, that's part of the maintenance budget. Uh, the police cruiser, it's the old one that was retired. Um, it's been sitting down at the, at the garage. It's been on munici bid and it's on munici bid until next Thursday midday. Um, as of today, the bids are up over $500. I think we started it at two or $300 and it'll really pick up in the next couple of days. If you never use munici bid, a lot of people wait till the last minute. So we're looking at $500 plus on the table for this cruiser, um, which we can then decide to accept the bid or reject it. And if we reject it, it would be to keep it for parts. But, you know, for me personally, I think it's worth the 500 bucks and just get it off the property and be done with it. And if we get up to like a thousand, great. Um, the light poles, they started at like 200 and they're up to like 250. Um, so we can make it, and again, we have a clause on there that says we have to accept the bid. Uh, but these are the old poles from the old traffic lights. So they're just sitting there taking up space right now. So both of those auctions and next Thursday, and John will have the bids available for us to vote on. Uh, any questions on, on that one? Excuse me. Uh, traffic studies. So back in 2019, um, they, uh, the borough requested a traffic study at the corner of Front and Burbank Street, where we have the three-way stop sign, except it's really only a two and a halfway stop. Cause if you're turning right from Burbank on the front, you're supposed to keep moving. Should there be another stop sign when you're coming down front and you would make a left on the Burbank? That was the question. To my knowledge, we're still waiting on the results of that study. So, uh, we may wanna follow up on that, but, um, pursuant to some discussions with, go ahead.
No, uh, well, I was just gonna say, um, and then I can go on to Schwoby Street too. Uh, why don't you finish what you're saying and then I'll just, you know, I'll take it from there when you're done. Go ahead, you were.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, no, I mean, all I was gonna say is that you mentioned some concerns about Schwoby Street, asked us about a street study. Uh, it's free of charge. So, um, traffic study, I believe was initiated or you tell us if it was initiated or what? And then go from there with whatever else you.
Let me elaborate. Front and Burbank, I guess, I mean, I wasn't sure what this 2019 thing meant, but, uh, in, because I was talking to, uh, Mr. Chris, a gentleman who works for PennDOT, uh, regarding Schwoby Street, I brought up, I said, yeah, I have you on the phone. I'll, let's talk about Front and Burbank Street here. And I, he, he referred me to, uh, and I can't think of his name. His first name's Robert. Can't think of his last name. Um, he, uh, he's the engineer who would do the traffic study. So I wasn't aware, you know, I kinda asked him today in an email, uh, what, uh, about possibly, my, my thoughts in that, on that intersection of Front and Burbank is to get rid of the accept right turn and leave the, you know, the, that other one without a stop sign. Uh, because all the kids cross there to go to school and then you have people that just don't have to stop at that turn when they're making a right. So I think that was my idea. I talked, my email alluded, well, it didn't allude to it. I just asked him, what do we need to do to get a traffic study done there? So he might come back telling me, hey, we already did one. We just didn't get the paperwork. Uh, but that would probably be regarding a stop sign there. Then I also said, I talked to him about the intersection of Center and Front, uh, possibly something there, not a stop sign coming up Center Street going towards the Borough Building, but maybe like a flashing red light to make people stop, a sign that says, you know, something, whatever we can do. So we'll see what he says about that. Now Schwoby Street, uh, I, when I spoke to, uh, Mr. Chris, we, he told me that we can do whatever we want down there because that is not, we don't need a traffic study. Uh, that is no, uh, the only thing, and if we go down, skip down to street humps versus street speed, speed humps versus speed humps. Humps we can do, bumps we can't, uh, unless we wanna lose some liquid fuel money. It probably would be like eight bucks if we did, you know, something down at Schwoby Street there. But, um, we don't need the traffic study. If we decide we wanna put some speed humps down there, we can use our money to put those in. Uh, I can assure you that it is desperately needed. A stop sign will not do anything down there cause there's, you know, the police have enough with the middle of town to do in the middle of town as opposed to being down there right on the Butler line, um, watching if people run through a stop sign or not. But, so we would have to look into speed humps cause the bumps, we would lose the liquid fuel money. And I, I would, my thought, and I talked to the people who live down there, uh, and five of them, five houses, they all think that would be a great idea. I can get their names and get them to sign something if, uh, people are doubting that I spoke to them. Uh, but, uh, there's little kids, puppies, uh, just families and they literally go, one guy was going, I had to be 70 miles an hour both ways and they just tear right through there. So that's, you know, the speed hump thing. If we could put something down there, at least start with one and then maybe a couple more. Uh, not going too far into town, but if you just put one in there, they'll just go over and then start speeding anyway. So we probably have to put at least two. So, um, again, Front and Burbank, we need the study. Schwoby, we can do whatever we want. So if you wanna.
The cost on that, Joe?
No, I didn't get that far yet. Actually, I was gonna, um, uh, I emailed the guy today or texted the guy about it and he's, uh, taken off and he's, it's his birthday and Father's Day and all that stuff. So he wasn't in the office to get the, any.
Yeah. So, so I, I'll send you, I'll send everyone what I found, which is, uh, it's a PennDOT document that has to do, I think it's called Traffic Aisment or something like that. And it talks about all these, uh, intersection tables and street humps and speed bumps. And the, the, the number that I saw in there is $1,500.
It's the, or a hump?
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if it was the hump or the bump now, but the, the, the one thing that jumped out was $1,500. And then there's also regulations that have to do with arrows and warnings that they're coming up and things.
Correct. Yeah.
So you have, you have to put the dash.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
We don't need, the, the, the thing is we, you know, if we decide to do it, then we go and then that's when this engineer will come down and say, okay, you need to sign here and stuff. But I would think that's probably a hump because the bumps are like 200 bucks. I mean, the screw in the ground, they're only like, I think I found one for 211 dollars for 12 feet wide.
Yeah.
Um, I would think that's.
And I mean, what, one possible consideration though is, you know, for plowing and if we're gonna end up ripping them up and stuff like that. So it's just.
You know, and I spoke, you know, I, I spoke to people who plow and it's just, you know, they're gonna be aware they're there. Um, and you just up the plow up and, and I spoke, that's what I specifically said to some of the neighbors down there. Are you gonna have a problem because it's probably not gonna be this plow, you know? And they're, they're made at the bottom of the plow. They're not gonna be these bricks that were on Center Street. Um, the plow is made to, to, uh, kinda work with the asphalt as best it can. But, you know, the neighbors were fine. They, you know, with the snow, if it doesn't get plowed as perfectly as it used to, then that's fine. It beats of these people driving like maniacs down there. And you, you really have to go down there, get a lawn chair and sit in somebody's front yard, but sit behind a car because you might. So, um, I will get a price from somebody about that. I'll figure that out and then we'll hopefully for next meeting.
Yeah. And, and I mean, my personal view on it is, is like, I'm not opposed to it in any way. Let's do it the right way. There's this whole document that shows that you have to paint these arrows on the street and you have to put these dashes and they have to be at so many feet and we're gonna, and, and you know, is it financially feasible if it is a thousand dollars for each or $1,500 for each? For this year, is this like a, you know, maybe a budget it for next year type thing? And I know you don't wanna hear that, but.
No, no, no. But one, one is, I mean, that's a start right now. And you, you, you would not even think about $1,500 because the loss of life is priceless. And that's what's really gonna happen down there.
Ah, so. I get it, but we're gonna be coming, we're gonna be coming to some more costs soon. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I'm, I'm cheap when it comes to.
Well, I'm cheap.
I'm stingy.
Well, I do think, I do think too, we need to focus on repairing the roads that have potholes that are beyond.
Yeah, but a pothole, you know, that, you know what? Actually, the, if that road is full of potholes, we, we wouldn't need a speed bump or hump. I better start saying hump because nobody would speed on it. When that road was torn up by the water authority, where the water authority owns, nobody sped there because it, they did, they couldn't cause they had to slow down for all that stone. So, um, in fact, I talked to somebody who on one of the streets and they, they said about paving and they said, I don't wanna pave because if I, if it gets paved, that they're gonna go 100 miles an hour down this. And I, and, you know, so we've gotta look at, is it worth putting a pothole? Fixing a pothole as opposed to people getting run over by a car? Um, I don't, I think personally, I think that's a no brainer. I will get the price on it, um, regarding that. And, you know, we're gonna talk about, uh, filling the potholes in, you know, what we're at a little bit down here. So, um, that'll kinda go along with what I'm saying here. Well, I'll have something to say about that. So we can move on, but I'll get the price and, and whatever you have the next, Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah. So I apologize to council because this just came to my attention a few hours ago. But at some point in time, the borough, um, purchased or came into possession of two brand new hand dryers, the kind that you put on the wall. Um, they would need to be installed by an electrician. My understanding is that the whipits so- sometimes have problems with people flushing, uh, paper towels down the toilet, which then becomes the borough's problem too. So, um, we may wanna make a motion to get some bids on installing these hand dryers that are just sitting there taking up space in the garage.
Were installed.
Um.
I thought they were.
No, John has them. They're, they're up in the loft. They're up in the loft. So I don't know what the current state of that bathroom is, if there's anything in there or not, but John has two. Maybe we have two working ones in there. Maybe we have two broken ones in there, but John's got two in a box. So.
Well, uh, you know, and bids are good, but maybe we have a, a professional engineer listening in or electrician listening in who wouldn't mind doing it out of the goodness of their heart. So let's look at that too. So.
Yeah. Uh, there's, there's somebody that I wanna reach out to too. I don't wanna name names on here, but I'll let everybody know, um, how I make out on that.
Cause yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but I won't mention any names either.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the next thing is, uh, part-time streets labor. So we have budget for part-time streets work. So.
Excuse me, Matt. We missed the, the copy of the list of the storm drains. Um, I would like to, I'm requesting the copy of the list of the storm drains that were cleaned on, on each Friday for the end of the week and that are anticipated being cleaned for the next week. So I can, uh, check them out first.
Yeah. So, yeah. So he's got the list down there. He made me a copy of it this morning. Um, so it's there.
Well, he's, he can, he can email them to me? Is that, he has email right down there or take a picture on his phone and send it to me?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
If he's making the list on the computer, you can just hop over and use the email and send it to me. So.
But he's not making the list on the computer. It's a handwritten list because sometimes it's Lorne doing it and sometimes it's him doing it, but it's, it's a form.
Uh, I mean, they can take a picture on the, on the phone and send it to me.
Okay. But it, it doesn't necessarily get updated every Friday morning. So like, we're not putting a task on there that says every Friday morning, he's gonna take a picture and he, and text out a list of something that didn't get updated, right?
Well.
It just seems like it'd be easier to just swing by and take a look at it when he's there, but.
Well, I mean, uh, how do I know it's done? I mean, if it's, if it's not getting updated every Friday, then I'll swing by and it'll keep saying the same thing. It's just not that hard. If what you did on Friday, put on the list, what you're going to do next week, put on the list and every Friday, that's, I mean, it sounds easy enough to me.
Okay. That, well, then at some point in time, we're gonna revisit that conversation about the computer down there that we talked about in January.
Well, I mean, that's fine. That's fine, but you know, right now you said it's written down. So it could be written down and a picture can be taken and sent to you the phone. That's, and then we can discuss getting them a computer. But for right now, that's no reason not to have it done every Friday for a, a, a previous list of what was done and what's going to be done. Um, and a picture sent on the phone. So that's my request, a request at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Labor, Matt?
Yeah. So, uh, we have budget for streets, part-time work. I apologize. I didn't pull up the budget beforehand. I think it's like, uh, $8,000 for the entire year. Now that does include our part-time plow drivers. We only used a few hundred dollars out of it for January, February, March, uh, for part-time plow drivers, very small amount. Um, but we will need it potentially in December, November, October as well. So we can't burn through it and there's no sake in burning through it. Um, I think the guys have been doing a phenomenal job of keeping up with the mowing. We have three really large areas that they take of between the Delacrosse Field, the Ford Ward and the park. Um, and they also have taken care of the event center and that crazy hill behind the building there. And I think they've been doing a great job of keeping up with the mowing with just two guys. In addition, at the same time, they were doing the street sweeping, which was like, uh, eight day, eight, eight working days to get through all the street sweeping, nine days. Um, and plus there are other duties that they take care of between the garbage and fixing the vehicles and everything like that. So in the past, we've had a streets laborer, um, and now that we wanna move on to pothole patching, it's really, you know, potentially an extra set of hands is really good to have. So we'll still have the mowing. We'll, we'll have the pothole patching, which is gonna go on probably for the rest of the summer. Um, we do have some street signs, those green reflective ones that we got, that some of them have been installed. Some of them are to be installed. And, uh, you know, some things that I would be interested in is repainting some of our parking lines and some of our no parking, especially. We have a lot of people that park right up against stop signs and you could barely see the faded yellow on the curb. So, um, you know, just an extra set of hands there. Um, to start out with, uh, we were talking about, you know, there's five days, five working days, four hours per day, 20 hours per week. Um, so I don't know if we need to do it by motion or what. Um, but I'd like to bring back our part-time streets laborer that we've used in the past.
Look, I have a question. And, and just, and only because I don't feel comfortable making any kind of vote on, uh, on bringing. And, and just, and only because I don't feel comfortable making any kind of vote on uh, on bringing a part-time uh, employee. And um, how, without, without the knowledge of how are things going down in the streets department? Um, do we, do we have a, do we have a, like a log of what work is done at what times? Um, do we, do we have like physical tangible proof that we need a part-time person at this time that we're, that we have a backlog going on? Um, cause I'm just not curious, I'm not, I'm not comfortable making any form of decision about bringing somebody on until we know that we need them, you know what I mean?
But I mean respectfully, there's.
Getting into personnel issues here.
I mean, well, we're not talking about personnel issues, we're talking about, do we have enough people working in the streets department at this time? Uh, no names, no, no employees.
Yeah.
I mean respectfully, I, I feel like the streets, the streets report is one of the most detailed reports every single month consistently. There's a lot of detail, there's questions answered. By contrast, I haven't seen a police report from that committee in months. So I, I mean, e- everybody's very aware of the, the work that's been going on in the streets department for months and months and months. And now we're talking about pothole patching and I don't know if anybody's ever looked at pothole patching, but there's gonna be a dump truck full of, of blacktop that somebody's gonna be driving, they're gonna dump some of it into the hole, two guys are gonna spread it and somebody's gonna have to hop onto the steamroller and, and roll over it. So I don't understand why we're having this part-time discussion now, when it was just included in the budget without question back in January.
Well, yeah, it was included in the budget, but, but that doesn't mean we're just gonna hop on hiring somebody.
Exactly, I mean, it's just, it's cause it's on there, doesn't mean you're gonna have.
I, I need to know, I need to know that we need that person. I need to know that is absolutely required. I need to know that, that we have, that we're unable to keep up with the work that we have and we absolutely need an extra set of hands. I'm sorry, I need to know that.
Well, I would say outside of plowing, this is one hundred percent our busiest time and we do have additional plow drivers as needed for the plowing season. So I think between grass and pothole patching and the additional signs that need to be put up, I do think there's a need.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I, as for pothole patching, uh, we're doing that all wrong. So we're just wasting money, we're not cutting out holes.
That's been brought up by the public before, I brought that up.
Yeah, uh, and I think there's someone on here right now who brought it up before and was told you're wrong, who, who spoke to Penn Dot specifically. And um, you know, we're doing the pothole patching all wrong, we're wasting our money.
I, I did, I did some research into that and, and the cold patch that we're using and we're tossing the holes and just stomping on, that is meant to be a temporary fix.
We're not using cold patching.
We are using.
I think we need to not discuss personnel. I think we need to have an executive for this.
We're not talking about a personnel issue, there's no names being brought up, we're, we're talking.
Oh, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about streets work and, and bringing a streets person back. And then it's getting hijacked to talk about some kind of procedural thing in terms of quality of work and things like that, that's what we're doing.
You're using the reason for having this person hired for pothole patching, I mean.
Well, Joe, do you not want the holes in town to be patched? Is that what you're saying?
We, we want them to be patched properly, we want them to be, to be cut into a square.
Okay, well, like I said, that's a different discussion.
Well, not if you're gonna equate the two, but mowing is another thing.
Yeah, you, you segwayed into that.
You're, you're, you're saying, and, and you know, let's, let's look at volunteerism for mowing. I'm talking to people at the Delacroix field who uh, are, they're working on it right now to see if they, well, they had volunteers, but they were told by our solicitor that you can't use volunteers because we're not insured, which is incorrect. So, um, you know, that will alleviate some of their work right there, if that happens. So, and then if we get somebody at the park, the same thing. And last time I was up at the uh, fourth ward, I think the guy who lived up there just did the large field. He didn't do the baseball field, but nevertheless, eliminate that work. And then we have more time to, it should be, we're, we're cutting a hole for the uh.
Well, then how about.
Okay, so who is, who is.
Go ahead, Matt.
Go ahead, Lynn.
No, go ahead.
No, who, who is, who is volunteering their time to line up volunteers to do mowing at borough-owned properties? Who's, who's gonna commit to that?
I'm working on it right now and I have names for you. I could prob, I could give you two names right now, but they just had to uh, uh, the person had to confirm it with them.
Attorney Branco, did we not discuss this is a liability issue?
I think we discussed it, it's a liability, we're gonna check with our uh, carrier.
Yeah, and I checked with our carrier and we're insured for a hundred volunteers.
Okay, then, then you're insured.
To use our equipment?
Yes, I said specifically to cut grass at our football field, yes.
How about workers' comp?
We're covered with workman's comp.
Not for volunteers.
With our volunteers. How is the fire department covered?
They are listed.
You're, we're covered for volunteers. You can fight this, that's fine. You don't wanna use volunteers, that's fine, because it's.
Yeah, I'd like to see it in writing. I'd like to see it in writing, that's all.
Okay, okay. Go look at the con, go look at the insurance contract.
Well, you're making the claim, why am I gonna go look at it?
Because you wanna know, I already know.
You should have it right in front of you. Well, you should, then you should be able to provide it, you know right to where to look for it.
I, I know right to where to look for it, right on my phone where I called her and she told me.
Who did you speak to?
Ms. Erin.
From where?
From our insurance company, six one oh, whatever, let me, let me look here for you.
Brown and Brown?
Yeah, that's it. No, I called a random insurance company and asked.
I didn't know if you spoke to the agent or the company, there's a difference. I was just asking a question.
And I, and, and I would not be stupid enough to talk to the company to ask them a random question, a question about a random insurance possibility. I said specifically on our insurance policy. So, you know, to not use volunteerism at this point is just, it, it makes no sense, but. You know, so, and we can't vote on the streets department person right now, so it'll be brought up, I guess, next meeting. And personally, I think that um, it should be brought up to advertise for someone to work in the streets department. Now, if that costs money, my, my, my question was, uh, I would like to advertise this so people could apply for it. And um, the question is, is that going to cost money? Because we have to put it in the legal section. Now, as a part-time employee, does that have to go in the legal section?
Yes.
Okay, so, so then how is it that um, if we just say randomly that somebody gets this job, like you're gonna give it to me? I'm not on council, you're just gonna give it to me. Um, are we not going to have some sort of liability because?
Because they're a previously hired seasonal employee. When you're seasonal, you're generally called back seasonally and on unemployment forms, you have to list potential date of recall.
Generally, but my position is, I have nothing against people coming back to work, but my position is there might be somebody else that wants the job. So, um, you know, I, I don't think it's just like we should hire somebody back. So that's another issue I have and I'm not sure anybody else uh, on council has that same issue or not. If they do, I would appreciate them speaking up.
I mean, it's established that it's much more costly to onboard a new employee versus to bring back an existing employee. Um, you know, we are gonna have to have this person covered under our insurance for our vehicles. They are gonna have to have some familiarity with the job functions, they are gonna have to be willing to pay or to accept the pay that we offer like that, so you know, the grass might not be greener on the other side.
Well, it might, it might not, but they also might accept less money. I don't know if that's possible, because it might be minimum wage, but you know, it's just an opportunity for other people to do the, the uh, to have a chance at something, so.
Okay, well, the longer, the longer we take to, the longer we take to advertise it potentially and interview and onboard people and stuff, that's less time that there's gonna be an extra set of hands. So if the, if things are going slow in terms of the work, because we have two guys versus two and a half guys, then that, then we know that's the reason why.
Well, which we may or may not need, to Shane's point, because you know, you justify that, we need that person, then yeah, we will be behind. If you justify that, we don't. If there is no justification for that person, then we won't.
Well, I feel like I provided, I feel like I provided that justification from the very beginning of the year, so I'm not gonna jump through any more hoops as far as that goes.
Matt, what about as far as the park?
What's that?
What about as far as the park? Aren't we gonna need somebody to do the sanitation to reopen the park?
Well, we're not at that part of the agenda yet and I'd really rather not go down that bunny hole right now until it comes.
That part-time person would be doing the same thing though, wouldn't it?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So therefore.
I mean, there's, there's lots, there's lots of work to be done, that's indisputable.
If, if that person's doing that work, don't we need two people? Because they've gotta actually do the mowing, pothole patching, install street signs, repainting and parking lines.
That's where I was going with that.
I mean, you know, so, a- and, well, we're gonna get to the park anyway, so we'll, we'll move on. I think it's uh, I'm, I'm good with this, but.
Yeah, I.
Until next week anyway.
Yeah, and, and I'm just gonna say in, in, before, before we come to this vote, I'm gonna make it clear that I'm not comfortable making a vote on, on bringing somebody in and it has nothing to do with who it is or what, or what it's for or anything. I just need to make sure that that work is there. Because what it comes down to is, yeah, we made a budget, but if we can come in under budget because we don't need somebody as of yet, then, then that's even better. So I, I may, I may, I don't know, I may job shadow with the, with the streets department for a few days, if I, if I have time during the week. Um, you know, any, anything along those lines, I just wanna make sure that uh, you know, time is utilized correctly and that, and that uh, we absolutely do need a third person in that department.
Matt, anything else?
Uh, that's it under uh, streets department.
Okay, moving on to fire, light and water.
Hello, I'm really nothing, just welcome for uh, the thank yous uh, in regards to the Center Street cleanup. Um, it went very well. We had a lot of cooperation from the community. I think we had a total of like two or three cars that were in the blocks for both nights. So uh, went well, everybody was happy when we were done and uh, thanks to, to John and Lornee, the two nights. Um, we got it cleaned up in like two hours each night.
Excellent job, thank you.
And uh, I'll give the fire report for, for next week.
Okay, very good. Nothing else, move on to buildings and grounds? Reopening of the borough building, we are going green.
Yeah, we are going green and uh, you know, um, my personal stance would be to allow the um, the emergency order to expire. That's really what Luzerne County did, they allowed it to expire and um, you know, we didn't really talk about it at the time, but. So um, that being the case, that would expire on the twenty-fifth, our next meeting, maybe back open for business as usual. That's following Monday at the borough building, but there are probably some things that need to be put in place in terms of signage and things like that. Um, and.
Prepare the mask signs, Matt, for.
Okay.
Have we, just out of curiosity, with the way that things have been operating for the past few months, have we encountered any major issues? Have there been any major complaints that somebody wasn't able to pay a bill? Um, have we heard anything from the public negative about this?
I have not, in fact, I've ran into several people using the Dropbox and they very much appreciate it.
Was that ever advertised, the Dropbox?
Informal.
It was announced at, at several meetings.
Correct.
It was announced at several meetings and it was in the newspaper as part of the write-up.
Shane, could you get that on Facebook? Because I had somebody, yes, I had like three people saying, you know, what do I do? And I'm like, you know, to the point of direct, having to direct them like stand in front of the door and look to your right, there's a hole in the door. So at least maybe let's, maybe that'll get.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um, if, if we haven't had any major issues, we haven't had people complaining, we haven't had people unable to pay bills. Uh, for, for the safety of everybody, um, because, because there, there's a great potential that we can go directly back to yellow, we can go directly back to red. Case numbers can go up, um, just for the safety of everybody, if we're not having any issues, don't fix what isn't broken. I think for, for the time being while we're in green, which is not done, which just to clarify for everybody, that's, it's red, yellow, green. And then there's a non-color after that that is done. Um, I think we should still keep the, keep the borough building closed. I don't know if anybody else has any other input on that, but I, I don't, I don't think we have any issues with it.
Well, I, I, my personal thoughts on that are, we should all sit down and talk uh, about that with uh, also, and have Leanne included. You know, in the executive session and see what we, we think, but uh, the signage is definitely uh, also maybe shutting the door and one person, not that it gets jam-packed up there, but you know, you never know, one person at the window and then the other guy's gotta stand in the lobby, you know, stuff like that. I think relatively uh, we're relatively safe, cause she's behind the glass, but you know, chime in anytime you want, Leanne, or if you don't want to, that's fine too, but um, you know, we should discuss that a little bit more because.
I mean, Attorney Branco, what justification do we have for not opening the building if we allow our disaster declaration to close or to, to expire? I mean, aren't municipal buildings supposed to be available to the public?
You still, if you're gonna reopen, you still have to maintain some degree of protocol as we were just talking about briefly. Uh, one person at the window, one in the thing, you gotta wipe down doorknobs, you gotta wipe down the area where the person was. Uh, mask up if they're coming in, uh, so you still have to implement some degree of protocol.
So, so.
But are we able to not open it?
Yeah, I mean, are, yeah, are we able to not open?
That's council's, that's council's prerogative.
And, and basically if I walk in there, you, and then walk out, Leanne's gotta come out and wipe everything down.
That's, I'm, I'm suggesting implement some type of protocol.
Yeah, that, you know, I, I think I'm starting to lean Shane's way with keeping her shut down. I mean, if there's a, I, I guess, she could use her just, oh, then if you let one in, you gotta let them all in, so. I'm thinking that maybe if we're like, don't fix what isn't broken, might be actually a pretty good idea.
May I say something?
Yes, Leanne, go ahead.
Okay, as far as the wipe down, that happens very frequently throughout the day. As far as people using the Dropbox, Joe, I could agree with you. I have spent numerous phone calls, you know, explaining, okay, stand in front of the doors, look to your right, it's there. Um, people do appreciate it. I personally don't have a problem with the borough building opening. Uh, a lot of people are already understanding that the stickers for the bulk items are not needed. Therefore, whatever you decide, that's fine with me, but wipe downs do happen frequently throughout the day. It's just, I run out of the Lysol wipes.
Thanks, Leanne, we'll see you have what you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Lynn, it's Dr. Bailey, could I just say something?
Certainly.
In regards to uh, wiping down the door handles, if you put that Foster forty eighty in the spray bottle, you could probably wipe that down and, and save a little cost also with.
That doesn't have to be, that does not have to be wiped off, does it?
No, but it, you, you are able to if you want. However, the further the mist, the faster it dries, that's all.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, so um, so actually you're not even really supposed to wipe anything down, everything's supposed to air dry for ten minutes. I remember the water authority circulated an email about that, Mr. Kowitsky. Um, so, and um, we did acquire the sanitation system for the police department, for their cruisers, for their station, and they've been very gracious about doing the other parts of the building. So they clear Leanne out of there periodically on a Friday and then they go in and spray it down. Um, and they do do the high-touch areas and things like that with that as well. So that's the compressor with the spray gun with the Foster forty eighty. So it, we may be doing seventy-five percent of what needs to be done already and maybe we just need to get on the same page and, and push it over that extra twenty-five percent and then we're uh, you know, really doing a pretty thorough sanitation on a regular basis.
Okay, and on that note too, I, I was under the uh, feeling that we should have the regular meeting in public now, that there is up to two hundred and fifty people allowed and along with the proper protocol and social distancing for the meeting.
Yeah, um, I, I was up there and it's, it looking, it's looking good for everybody to be far enough apart unless we get a huge. Yeah, um, I, I was up there, and it's, it looking, it's looking good for everybody to be far enough apart, unless we get a huge crowd, which, you know, probably won't happen, and it would have to be a really huge crowd, but I think-
Right, and we can spread, we can put more chairs out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would also be in favor of going back to in-person meetings, uh, maybe a hybrid approach, initially where it's, the Zoom is still open for another meeting, um, but it'd go back to in-person.
Yeah, because really, the protocol for having meetings held this way is for really extenuating circumstances, and as we're moving into the green, if a restaurant can be open, we should be able to meet in public, properly distanced.
And you know you guys all wanna see me.
Okay, moving on. Who wants to take the next one?
Power on Hemlock Street in Delacrosse Field, okay, well, um, Hemlock Street is not Hemlock Street, we have, that bill has been changed, it is Fourth Ward. How it became Hemlock Street, I don't know, but it now says on there, I think Chestnut Street and Fourth Ward, it should say. Uh, Delacrosse Field, they, they both had, uh, um, meters on that were not being used, my suggestion was to turn them off. That did not happen, I s, I kinda still think that should be the case, uh, 'cause it's over a hundred dollars a month, uh, I spoke to Mr., uh, I can't think of his name right now, uh, Matt, with the, from the Delacrosse, he said there's nothing down there that would matter, uh, by the time they use them. It will be the fall, if they indeed do have their, uh, football season for the Peewees, Midgets, I don't, I don't know if I could say that anymore, um, small people, can't even say that, um, so, and the, the Fourth Ward, it, they're, they're, the Fourth Ward, it's for the lights, uh, which, regardless of if it gets cha, turned off now or later, now, it should get turned off in October, because we're wasting thirty-five dollars a month to pay for something we can have turned on for free, the only reason we'd have to pay to have it turned on is if we wait more than a year, which we won't. Uh, and probably the same with the Delacrosse, I think the Delacrosse should be shut off now, because it's going to be, I, I doubt they're going to do anything. And it might sound nickel-and-dime-ish, but, you know, at the end of the year, well, eleven months, 'cause if we wait too long to turn it off, it'll be a year, so eleven months, that would be, you know, eleven hundred dollars we could save. But, that's Hemlock Street, so you might wanna put in parentheses there, Matt, um, now Fourth Ward and, uh, Chestnut Street power supply, so-
All right, but, but I'm confused, the, the Whippets are the ones that are asking to get things rolling down at the Delacrosse, so, as of right now, why would we shut the power off now, at the end of the season, wouldn't that be-
You know, the, the thing is that, well, we should, this should have been done every year for the last how many years, which would have probably been twelve thousand dollars we saved, but, the, the chances of that football season going through are slim and none, and it's, it's but a phone call, tomorrow they shut it off, and, you know, six weeks from now, a phone call, and you know what, it's thirty-five bucks. I mean, I know that might sound, but every thirty-five dollars you save is thirty-five dollars you save, so, and, you know, I'm gonna allude to the timer for the Fourth Ward, eight-thirty PM till four to twelve AM, that's just, uh, that doesn't sound like a good idea. But again, do we need, if we're going to get into the parks, are we gonna open them up, or are we gonna open them up partially? I think we should consider, you know, this is all encompassing, do we need to have that power up there if there's no, if there are no, if there's no business for anybody to be in that park?
I think we should at least wait until we get down to Parks and Rec to decide, you know, see what we're gonna-
Right, but I'm just saying, that's-
So, are we talking, we're gonna talk about the Fourth Ward first, let's, 'cause we keep going back and forth, so let's start with the Fourth Ward, right? So, the only power that I could see up there is there's two poles, and they each have two lights on them with those old phosphate bulbs on them, which apparently we need the, the Fire Department ladder truck to even get to them. One of the four bulbs is burned out right now, we might have a box of bulbs, 'cause it might be the same thing as the floodlights down at the park. It's very dark up there, because we have the field on one side, we have the basketball court on the other side, there's really not a lot of houses up there on Burton Street, and on Chestnut Street and everything, and for thirty-five dollars a month, you know, just to have some lighting on there for that period of time, that feels worth it to me.
We're not, we're not using, and, and according to, and either somebody lied to me at PPNL, or, um, they looked at the bill wrong. Those lights are not part of that meter, we're just paying, we're not using any service on that meter, it's just, we're just paying to have a meter there. Thirty-five bucks to have a meter, to turn the, the lights on, on the court, that's what, yeah, they didn't put it to me that way, because they don't know anything about the court, all they know is there's no usage on it. So, the lights that are up there to keep the street lit are lights that we pay for with our street lighting. The, the meter that's up there is to put, to turn the lights on, when you go down where it says, "Street Department Reset Timer for Fourth Ward", that's for those lights, which, you know, gets into the whole park issue, are we gonna open up a park or not open up a park? Um, and, so, realistically,
Right.
It's, it's no, if, if it's off right now, it's still gonna look the same, if I go up there right now, as long as that's not on a timer, if I go up there right now, and cut the power to that meter, it's still gonna look the same, now that's what PPNL told me. If that's not correct, then I'll have to call the person back, I don't remember their name, but, you know, that would be a complaint I would have, you told, gave me the wrong information, as far as I know, and maybe LeAnn can say this, I know she doesn't know all the electric bills, but I don't think it's, there's no consumption on it, so, that's, and that's what they told me, so, turning it off wouldn't matter one bit, and turning the ones off at the Delacrosse Field won't matter either, because the lights in that area are also on the streets. There's no consumption on it.
Well, the, I mean, the Delacrosse Field, I, I, well, let me stay with the Fourth Ward, all right? So, I would like to have the four lights that come on at night, just to have some extra lighting up there. If we're getting lucky and they're coming off the streetlights, that's great, and if we can truly turn this thing off, then I don't have a problem with that. Okay? Does that sound? Like, do, do we, does everybody agree with that, that we wanna have some lighting up there, especially if it's coming from the streetlights?
Well, sure, we absolutely wanna have street lighting up there, and if PPNL's-
No, I'm, I'm talking about those four lights that are up on the pole that are shining down over the basketball court. So, I think I heard you say that those are coming.
You mean, like, to, they, they turn on on the timer lights, the big lights that you use at night? Yeah, I mean, I first-
No, I don't-
I, I don't have a problem with that last year, and probably next year if we're okay, but right now, I think it's, you know, I think because we have the whole shut the park thing down, I think just keep them off, and my thoughts are just, I definitely don't think they should be turned on from eight-thirty till twelve, eight-thirty till ten, if they're going to get turned on, and it's voted to turn them on, that would be my recommendation, but I, my, my thoughts are, don't turn them on at all, keep that place with the yellow, uh, strings around it.
Joe, are, Joe, I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused here, are those lights, the basketball court lights, we are not paying for any amount of that electricity usage? I mean, I mean, it's, it's included.
You, you pay for, no, no, yeah, the, the meter, uh, the meter up there is thirty-some dollars a month, give or take a few. I think it was thirty-five, but I could be wrong, it's, let's just say thirty, and there's no consumption on it, so we just technically, all we do is pay for the meter. Now, when we obviously turn the lights on with the timer in the summer, we're going to be paying more money, because-
The lights have been on for years, just to be clear. But the timer was not set, yeah, okay.
Uh, well, there was all, I mean, I always saw a timer up there, 'cause they turn off and on, so-
They had to adjust the timer, because it was like, they were coming on at like one in the morning, I couldn't, and some days I would go up there and they were on, and then the same time the next day they weren't on, so, they just recently set the timer, and I'm planning to go up there at eight-thirty, and I'm planning to go up there at twelve.
Okay, but that's not, you know, the issue is, are we using power or not using power, I think Shane's question is, and we are paying, are we paying any money, we're paying money for a meter.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what, that's what I was, that's what I was just curious about, because I wasn't sure about how that was working.
Yeah, so, October till April, say, or whenever we turn the, whenever you decide to use those lights on the timer, in between there, we're not, there's, all we're doing is paying to have a meter sit up there and do nothing for us, so it's, you know, it's a waste of money. Um, and then when they turn the lights on, on the timer, then obviously it's thirty-five plus whatever we pay to keep whatever usage we have from the lights. So, um, and that's, again, that's what PPNL has told me, there's no usage on that meter, the lights near that, uh, the, the pole lights on the big brown tree poles, they are included in our, uh, Streets Lighting Bill. I guess I'll put it, so, and again, Delacrosse Field's the same thing, we just have two meters down there, nothing's being used when it's offseason, and, uh, any lighting down there that's on now, it's, is street lighting that we already paid for, so-
Okay, so, so now, okay, so we're, I'm still not clear on the Fourth Ward, but like, my, my, to make it crystal clear for me, those four lights that are lighting up right now, I'd like to have those lights be on all the time, whether we're paying for them or not, that's me personally.
Yeah, that's a, that's a-
Because I think it's very dark up there.
Liability issue, I'd-
Yeah, safety deters crime.
The four lights, yeah, the four light, if they're streetlights, I, I, I'm confused here, if, if lights that light up-
They're not streetlights, okay? It, no, hold on, if you're, if you're facing Danny Nokie's house, okay, and you're on the basketball court, and you turn to your right to face Burton Street, there's two poles, and each one of them have two floodlights on them, and I want those lights to be working at night, all year round.
Okay.
So that there's a light up there.
So, so they're, they are working all year round now?
Well, they've been on some timer setting, and they were recently, the timer was changed to the eight-thirty to twelve just a few days ago, and I've been trying to find the time to go up there and make sure that they're coming on when they should come on, and that they're going off when they should go off.
Okay, so, if, if that's the case, and then when I talk to PPNL, and they say there's no usage on that meter, then, you know, they're good to go whenever, but if there's usage on that meter, and they made a mistake or something, then those lights are on that meter, but-
Don't they allow for minimal usage?
No, soon as you pop that thing on there, you know, they're not gonna give you anything.
No, but, I mean, what do they measure by, how high does it have to go?
What do you mean, how?
'Cause we have a service that I know that is similar in price, and that there is a light that's on, and the usage is still always basically almost the base price of the meter, in the thirty-five to thirty-eight dollar range.
Okay, but, yeah, almost, like-
So there's zero usage? How do they, how do they measure it? By kilowatt-hours?
Right.
But how many do they need to register that there's usage to them?
One kilowatt-hour. I mean, 'cause it's, you know, so much per kilowatt-hour, so as soon as you register one, boom.
I think-
So all I'm saying is-
That's just my opinion.
Well, it's not a li, it's not a liability issue if the meter isn't the one causing, causing those lights to be on, 'cause you can turn the meter off and those lights will still stay on. That's what, that's the point I'm trying to make, is, if those, if that meter has zero usage on it, which I was told, then those lights will come on and off all day long and all night long, and it's not gonna, if, we're already paying for it somewhere else.
But do we have a way in-house of, of checking this?
Well, we have a way-
We can get this.
We call PPNL and get them the meter number again, and the count number and everything, and, uh, we ask again, is there usage on there? And if they say there is not usage on there, then we've got to maybe get a technician out there to say, well, where's, where are these, uh, poles, are the poles, do the poles have those labels on it, like, south, north, one, two, three, four, eight on there? Does anybody know that?
These are two, these are two metal poles that we put in, like, take the streetlights out of the equation. Maybe we're lucky here, and these lights are feeding off of the streetlights, that there's a wire above the court, I don't know. If, if we wanna shut the thing off, then we shut the thing off, but if that makes the, those four floodlights not come on, I'm gonna be coming back to say, let's turn it right back on, 'cause I want lights up there.
Yeah.
I mean, subject to the majority opinion of council, I'm not saying it's up to me, but like, that's, I wanna be very clear that I want lighting up there. If we're paying for a, a meter for no reason, then, then that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, on the info that I've been given regarding these three, is there is no usage on them, so if that's incorrect-
Then what is it controlling?
It's control, well, one control down in Delac, it controls the lights for the, for the, the, the meter up there supposedly controls, so, that's what I assumed after she said there's no, no, uh, I mean, it makes sense, if there's no charge on the meter, then it's obviously the lights that are on the courts, because they're not used. I mean, they're used in the summer, I mean, they would, she would've said, I, I mean, I didn't say, "Look back last year, was there a charge?", but she said, "No."
I don't think that court has lights, that's not like the park, that court doesn't have any additional lights other than these four that I'm talking about.
Well, I mean, I'm just telling you what she told me, so, um, and down the, down the Delacrosse Field, it's the two little buildings that they have like concessions in, and then there's another building I think they store some stuff in, they probably just need lights there.
Yeah, so, so there's probably three, there's three things that have power there, there's power in the bathroom, there's power in the original shed, and then there's power in that score building down there, and I think there's at least two meters there, which means two bills. But, relative to the Delacrosse Field, I mean, we have this, this park reopening guidance, we have this, the PIAA stuff came out, and, and why do we have the Whippets asking for registration if they're not gonna have a season? If they are gonna have a season, are we gonna turn this off next week, and then two weeks later be calling to turn it back on, isn't this moot until the end of the season?
Uh, the reason they're doing it is 'cause they're preparing as if they're going to have a season, but, you know, like they should do. Uh, and if they don't have a season-
So do they have a, do they have a start date?
Oh, well, I mean, it would be, if, I guess the start date right now would be contingent upon when they're allowed to start via the government's, the government allowing them to do it, uh, would be number one, and s, i, if that's the case, and the government said, "Hey, tomorrow, everybody can do whatever they want", then their start date would be their normal start date, which, I don't know, it's August, maybe, into July, I don't know, so-
Oh, they're, they're, I, I think they start in Ju, Wilson, can you help me out to, with the PIAA stuff and the organized sports stuff, I mean, basically, the, the Whippets are held up right now by the park closure, I think, more than anything else.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
I, I'd like to say for playing, for playing, but I don't know if they can train, if they can-
Yes.
They have organized team activities up to so many P- seventy-five or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so for all intents and purposes, they, they can perform things, they just can't actually play a game.
But they could, they can have physical contact with each other, but they can do the exercises and everything as long as they're socially distanced.
Yeah, so, I mean, is that gonna happen? You can't play football without contacting each other.
Yeah, you can-
Well, I'm asking my question again, is why are we even considering having signups? If we're, if, so, I, I mean, can we get in touch with somebody from them, weren't they asked to join?
I, I will, I will clarify, um, I did, I did serve on the Whippets Board for a brief period of time, my kids were in the Whippets. After registration, there is quite some time of training, a, a long period of training, before there's any games played or anything like that. So, as far as that goes, without speaking on behalf of them directly, um, I will say that, that I'm sure they're, they're interested in, in being able to train at this time, which, this is the time that they would be training.
And they're, they're preparing, I don't see what the problem is with them getting ready.
Well, I think they're gonna be using, where, this is the power discussion, so they're, they, I believe they sell cold drinks during their practices, and have their concession stand open and stuff, so they're gonna be using some power in some building.
Right, you'll need the refrigerator to have cold drinks in it.
That's right, and they're gonna, not socially distanced when they do it, but if that's the case, then you call up and you say, "Turn the power on", it's that, it's not that hard. So, you know, I, I mean, just-
Yeah, as, as for the Fourth Ward, I'd like to, I'd like to look into seeing, um, you know, exactly what's going on up there before we go fiddling with anything. Um, I do agree that, that it's, uh, it's, it's a safety thing, it's a, it deters vandalism, um, you know, lights are always a great thing, especially in that area, it's very dark. As for the, uh, as for the Delacrosse Field, then it depends in, in fifteen to two hours, fifteen minutes to two hours, whenever we get down to Parks and Recreation, um, it depends heavily on that, but I think-
Well, and as speaking, speaking with the people, speaking with, uh, is it Matt? Shane, correct me if I'm wrong.
Matt Walsh, the president.
He said he does not have a problem with us turning those off, so, there's that, so we can move on from there, 'cause we can't vote on it anyway now.
Okay. The eight oh one Center Street power consumption.
Matt? Hello?
Does anyone?
Can you hear me? You're muted?
Yeah, sorry, I got stuck for a second. Can you hear me now? Alright, so we have, we continue to have high usage there, I'm just putting it on here again, just so that we don't lose track of it. I know that the fire department's doing a really good job of going through the building and making sure that nothing's running or being plugged in or anything like that, so. I don't know if we need to get an electrician in there at some point in time or what, to figure out if there's something that's just sucking power.
We need to look at the vacant sections too, cause I was just in there, there are things that probably could be unplugged, I don't know if everything's unplugged, there are still things in there. You can at least take a look.
Yeah, and we also, uh, yeah, we wanna get in there and get that place straightened out, so. Uh, we'll, we'll let everybody know what's going on. Um, it's just on there, so it doesn't fall off the radar like some things sometimes do.
Okay, we already.
The timer. Yeah.
So, control of the thermostat?
Yeah, I mean. Uh, the police, uh, control the thermostat. Poorly Anne is sweating and it's, you know, freezing in there, I think that's a great way we can save some money, because I don't think it needs to be sixty-eight degrees in your office. I'm sorry. Um, and especially when Leanne's over there sweating at seventy-eight degrees or freezing, if it's the winter, which might be tomorrow. Here, so I think we need to think about what we can do to lessen our energy consumption up there. Regarding the thermostat, so. Um, I don't know what kind of bills we get up there from the electric company, but I can guess that they're not small.
It's, uh, about three hundred and some dollars a month versus the four hundred and some dollars a month at the eight oh one center.
And the eight oh one center's not even being used and we're spending four hundred a month there? Is that correct?
Right. Part of it's not being used, yeah.
Yeah, 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 but I still think we can do better up where we are, especially, I mean, I think more of the issue is, you know. Leanne doesn't get to reap any of the benefits of their coolness over in the police office. So I think we need to figure out how to maybe save some money and get things working properly for her. So let's, you know, talk about that a little more.
Yeah, well, I mean, but, but, but here's the thing, is, is hers busted. And we're, we're waiting on that grant that we applied for, which the heating in her area is part of that. And it's gonna get to a point in the year where we're gonna say, alright, now it's getting cold, we can't wait for this grant forever, which we may or may not get. And we're gonna get a plumber in there, it's like, you know, trying to hold out as long as we can to see if it's, if the grants kinda come through. And maybe that's what the real solution is here. But then if we don't get it, we're gonna have to do some repairs to get it straightened out for the winter time, for sure.
Well, sure, but.
So, I mean.
I, I, I agree, but that, the, uh, cause it's, so it's a lot less on the body if you're hot as opposed to freezing up there and try and do work, but. Um, I think, you know, with that said, still, it, when I, when I go in there and I literally shiver when I go down one end. And I'm up at the other end and it's nice and comfortable, what's, what's that temperature at? You've been in that office? Matt, you've seen that, um, you, it probably could be adjusted a little better to save us some money. I mean, every degree it goes up or down, we save a percentage of money. And I'm just, you know. I understand you need comfort, but at the same time, you, you gotta be. Consider who's paying for that. And we are. So I think we might wanna sit down and ask them to be more, uh, considerate of the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, the time clock. Who has?
Yeah. Uh, Lynn, and you and I talked about that, did you discover a time clock?
I did not look in that room where it used to be, I do not know if it's in there.
I don't think it's in there, I can't remember it, see, Leanne, do you remember there being a time clock where you had the office up at the borough building?
Yes, there was a time clock up there. Um, when I first move up, moved up there, there was a time clock there, we used it, the police used it, and then. Quite honestly, I don't know what happened.
In the, in that small room, Leanne, correct?
Yeah.
Right past your office?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean, yeah.
And I don't know what happened, it just did not work properly.
Okay, well, with that said, we'll look to see first if we have it, but if it doesn't work properly, I think we need to, uh. Uh, consider investing in, one, they're not that expensive. Um, nothing online, something you physically have to come in and actually put your card in. So. Um. Well, I'll first look to see if that one's up there, and then we'll take it from there. That's alright with everybody. Anybody object to that?
Not looking into it.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna look into it.
Right. Okay, next, the football registrations.
Uh, did I forward you guys all that email from him, from Mr. Matt? Apologize if I didn't, but basically they have their plan, uh, social distancing masks and all sorts of things, uh, if I didn't. I mean, obviously we can't vote on it tonight, so I'll get it to you if I didn't. Um, you know, for registrations in case they are able to have, uh, football. Pretty much. That's, it's.
Alright, but they have dates that are the twenty, do they, they have dates on there beginning the twenty-first, Saturday, so, I mean, does that mean they're gonna understand that we have to wait for the meeting next week?
We don't, we don't have to wait for the meeting, we're not spending money.
I mean, we can get.
We can't vote on anything, we have, the, the parks are closed right now.
We don't have to vote on, on opening the parks, we didn't vote on closing the parks.
Yes, we did.
Within a meeting?
It was part of our emergency closure.
So. Not in a meeting.
Yes.
Public meeting.
Yes, we can, we, we re-adopted that every meeting.
Okay, so they don't, they don't need the park open to do it, they said it's drive-by. Um, and, uh. So, if, I don't think we, I guess basically we can say, okay, if we feel that, uh, the plan is good, it's not like, uh. You know, we are spending money or something like that, um. I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with them doing a drive-by registration.
I mean, there was other things, they, they have the, uh, uh. Who's got that email, somebody sent it to me.
Can't they do it in the parking lot out by the Delacroix?
Well, that, that's kinda what they're doing, they have, um. Uh. They have the, uh, system set up as to what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't see that being an issue in the parking lot out there, I mean, cause they're not going on any of the property.
Well, right, but it's, you know, you know, and it is the number of people, okay?
Boy, I thought it, it could be up to crowds of two hundred and fifty as of tomorrow.
I'd love to see two hundred and fifty people applying, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
Yeah, I don't see it as an issue.
I mean, if everybody, did everybody look at that email to see how?
Yeah, I, I did.
Yeah, I saw.
I don't remember exactly word for word, but.
Same, but I had no objections to it.
Um, it, it seemed like it was a very well thought out plan, he has the masks, everybody's gonna, uh, so socially distance. Um, you know. I mean. Yeah, let's see, it's, uh. Saturday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, six twenty to seven one are the dates, twelve the times, and then it's, uh. Mandatory masking, pop-up tent set up with table and chair for board member conducting the registration, paperwork ready on multiple clipboards. Cone set up six feet apart for those waiting in line to register. Additional car side service, clipboards can also be handed to parents through the window of the car and paperwork can be completed without leaving their vehicle.
Yeah, and that's where it is, the Delacroix parking lot, yeah, that, that, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you don't wanna go, you don't wanna go, I mean, and I don't think we need to really. We need to vote on it? I mean, we can't, but we, do we really need to?
So we're letting, we're letting them register before we motion to open it, correct?
Yeah, but they're not gonna be in the park, they're gonna be on the road in the park.
No, no, I mean.
Well, I think it's all the same property at the end of the day, that's the parking lot for the park.
And without knowing they're gonna have a season, we're, we're gonna, they're, they're willing to do that, take registrations ahead of time?
Yeah, the Freeland Whippets Midget Football Association is kindly asking to.
Oh, I have the letter up in front of me, I read it.
Yeah.
I see it says, we're unsure if we'll have a season.
Right, yeah, I mean, everything's unsure. Until it's, till we catch Corona. Um, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with them doing it, it's, I mean, I think it's a pretty good decent plan, it's probably much safer than going to Walmart. Or even SureSave for that matter. And if people don't wanna go, they won't go.
So, I, I'm not gonna sit here and say yes or no, what I am gonna say is I wish people would respect the fact that we're limited. In terms of when we can take official actions to our voting meetings.
I'd like some clarification on this. Attorney, Attorney Branco, when it comes to, when it comes to in-house things where money's not being spent, such as opening or closing a park. Do we need to make that decision? I don't even wanna use the word vote, do we need to make the decision to open or close our parks in a public meeting?
To open our parks and close our parks, yes. To permit these guys to do what they're gonna do, are they gonna be on park proper property?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure about that.
It is, it's the Delacroix Field parking lot, it's attached to the park, it, it would be just like parking at.
I can, I can pull.
At the end of the grass down by SureSave.
I'll, I'll pull up the tax property records, but I'm not sure if that's the park or if that's the, uh, if that's actually the, um.
Can't we just reach out to them?
Then it's part of ours for the salt shed, it's still borough property.
It's borough property, but is it borough property that was closed? That's the question. Was the parking lot for the Delacroix Field ever closed, or was Delacroix Field itself the only thing that was closed?
No, but that's.
That's what the question comes down to.
Talking about making a decision based on borough property. Not whether or not it was closed.
Yeah, absolutely, so yeah, so as far as that goes, yes, I'm, I'm all for that. We'll let them operate on borough property.
No, but that's what, you were asking the attorney if it had to be a public meeting to vote at utilizing borough property. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a question at one point, but now we're at the point where we're questioning whether or not the parking lot is allowed to be used. If that's part of the park or if that's not part of the park.
No, you were, I thought you were asking him if we need to vote on that because it's borough property.
I, I, I was asking, I was asking because of, mostly because of the parks, I was hoping to see the parks opened today. Today, I was hoping to see the parks opened, or at least us making a motion or making some kind of, some kind of action on reopening the parks.
What is the reason that we can't allow with these stipulations in place for them to have signups?
I don't see any reason, I'm fine, I'm fine with them having their signups. As long as, and.
Put it this way, I mean, since we can't vote on it, and it would just be basically, uh, um, our opinions at this point, cause it's not an official vote. If they go down there and have their registrations. Is somebody gonna, are you gonna call the police on them and have them stop their registrations? Who's gonna be that guy? So.
Attorney Branco, where do we stand with that?
It's council's prerogative to open and close the parks.
But can we do that tonight, or do we have to wait for the meeting?
To me, I would do it at a meeting.
But they're not in the park, they're on the parking lot.
And that's my position as well, is that I'm not saying yes or no, because I don't think we have the authority in a work session to make any motion.
We, we do not, we do not, however, however, for the next week, we are in a state of emergency, which means we can hold emergency meetings. At any point in time that we'd like to, just like how we held an emergency.
Yeah, and they have to be advertised, so should we advertise it, should we advertise it tomorrow to have it on Tuesday instead of wait until Thursday?
And we can't make a motion to advertise anyway, right now.
Okay, again, my question is, if they have this happen. What's going to happen to them?
As far as this goes, I'm fine with this. Does anyone have an issue with this?
It's not a vote, if you see me on the street and ask me, I'm gonna say it's fine with me to do it, with them to do it. For them to do it. So.
Nobody seems to have an issue with it, so I wish them good luck tomorrow and hope a lot of people come out. Or whenever they're beginning.
Alright, let's move on to the ambulance report.
Love it for the meeting, and I'd like to thank council, the streets and water authority for fixing, uh, the drainage problem in the front there. Greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, they did a great job, thanks to all those guys for that.
Thank you.
I still don't, by the way, have a cost on that, but it was minimal, it was not, I don't know if we even get in a bill, all we used was concrete, so they did a great job.
Absolutely. Alright, we'll move on to parks and rec, which we've basically been discussing anyway, but we'll continue that discussion, reopening of the parks in the field, so everybody's ready to take action next week.
Ready to take action today, if anybody else would like to take action today.
It is not a voting session.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote on it, I'm just gonna say that we're opening up the parks.
Well, it's the mayor and myself that signed the declaration, so. Anyone else have any plans on the monitoring and sanitization of the parks?
What was the question? Anybody else have any one?
Input on monitoring and sanitizing the parks and bathrooms and the equipment and if the equipment going up.
I kinda just don't know how that's gonna happen, that's my comment on it.
I guess we should actually, we should, if we're, if we're not gonna make them, make the movement today to open the parks, we should at least be prepared. For next week to make, uh, to make some kind of movements on this. Uh, as far as this goes, we're all aware that there are CDC guidelines, whi- which are, which are to my knowledge, uh, mandatory. And then there are, there are also, um, optional things that are suggested from the CDC, one of the things that is mandatory. To my knowledge, is the, uh, sanitization of equipment in between uses. And Wilson, you may be able to give me a little bit more knowledge on that, uh, anything else that's as far as the things that are optional, that, that includes having signs, having somewhere to mo- someone there to monitor the place, things like that.
The state actually sent out a thing on recreation and park facility reopening guidelines. And it outlines, uh, outdoor recreation, indoor recreation, community events. Um, as far as playgrounds in the green, once it opens. Um, they require open and physical distancing restrictions and informative signage. Um, they also had about the bathrooms, that they do have to be daily sanitized. Um. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty vague, it's, you know, it's just a general guideline, it's from the, uh, PA Department of Health's guidelines of what they want everybody doing. And that's pretty much what the state's following with, uh, all the state parks and everything.
If we were to, to open the parks, uh, what would we need to do?
Sanitize.
I mean, is that a ne- necessary sanitize or suggested, I'm just, I'm just, that's, that's what I was under the.
They are telling, like, if you do bathrooms, anything that anybody's gonna touch, they, they are asking for sanit, sanit, everything to be sanitized.
Yeah, so I'd just like to say right off the bat that I think that the bathrooms at the parks should not be open under any circumstances.
I agree.
Because park hours are basically dusk till dawn, and they need to be cleaned at least periodically for that entire period. And we have no money to spend on this.
I agree.
I'm thinking, I, I think, and I know this might, might not go well, because, you know, once you let somebody in there, but. Uh, my thoughts were, if, if we gotta do something, just you open the path so you can cut through there, but, and that's it. But that will probably lend to people just doing whatever the heck they want, so that's just my opinion. I, I, we don't have the time, don't have the money, don't have the bodies to be down there cleaning everything after everybody to fall into these guidelines, so.
So I'll say, um, we, we, the county is letting their, their declaration expire. Um, we may potentially follow the same route. Um. We have guidelines set out for the parks, and we have an overwhelming amount of people, um. I did, I put an online poll up, I asked people in, in the town, um, I gave them a few different options. One option was, uh, just asking what they, what they wanted, what they thought was best for, for themselves, for their town. Um, the first. The first option was completely entirely reopening the parks, including the playgrounds. The second option was opening only the fields and the basketball courts, which would save us from having to sanitize anything. And then, uh, the third option was leave everything closed. There were two hundred and forty-three people that replied to that, who, uh, who voted on that. One hundred and ninety-nine are in the completely reopen them, uh, twenty-seven are in the partial reopening of the courts and the fields. Seventeen are in the keep them entirely closed category. So as for next week, I think our best route to go is reopen the parks entirely. We reopen the playgrounds, all areas of the parks, all areas of all three parks. Uh, we keep the bathrooms closed. That's additional sanitization that we, we can't handle at this point in time. And, uh, we can see how we do with the, uh, with sanitization. And I, and again, I don't know the frequency. I don't know, you know, all that stuff, but, uh, but that's what I'm willing to, uh, to work on for next week. Again, if, if not today.
Did you get input from any members of the rec board, Shane?
I have not, no. Aside from myself, who is a hundred percent for opening the parks. And as you guys know, and, and I'll be open with everybody, at one point, I was only for opening the fields and the courts. That's when we were in the yellow phase. That's when, uh, everything was still ongoing as far as declarations and everything. But at this point, it looks like those things are, we're a little bit more lax at this time. I think the kids need something to do. They need somewhere to go.
I am accused though by the why open the parks and you are not for opening the borough building.
Uh, because no one's being, being, no, no one doesn't have, uh, access to something if we, if we.
But it's a public building.
Everybody, but that doesn't mean that, that, that a kid is gonna benefit from riding the teeter daughter in there, or that anyone's gonna benefit from going inside that building. My first question was, is anybody, or do we have any issues? As long as people are still paying their bills, they have a way to pay their bills, they have a way to drop things off, they have a way to get the things that they need or get the information that they need, then there's no reason to open that up. But, on the other hand, we do have a lot of people, a hundred and ninety-nine people, um, from my count, that would like to access the parks and would benefit from that. We have no benefit from opening up the borough building, because we have no, we have no loss.
Well, yeah.
What's the benefit? That's.
I mean, having code and zoning accessible to you, having a tax collector accessible to you, having a secretary accessible to you.
Phones, with, everybody's got a phone. It's, it's twenty-twenty.
Well.
Well, and, and the thing is that.
And telework is still suggested in the green phase. Telework is still suggested.
You, you have, you have a hundred and ninety-nine people voting, and I pointed this out to you. I mean, are a hundred and forty-seven of them just random people? Or are they from Freeland? That's number one. And number two, just because they think it should be open, could be a hundred and seventy-five grandmas on there saying yes, and they don't have a, they'll never be down the park. So, I mean, I, I do appreciate you taking.
Joe, I'm a parent, I'm on the rec board, and then besides from that, somebody doesn't have to be a resident of the borough to, to access and enjoy our parks. Right now, residents of the borough.
Don't use their opinion as, as ammunition when, when we're not, we're not beholden to them. They're not taxpayers, they're not residents.
Don't you ever, don't you ever, ever talk like that. People coming to this borough, they use our streets, they use our parks, and we provide it for everyone, not just the borough of Freeland.
And the taxpayers are liable to liabilities of the borough, and this is a potential liability to the borough.
So, so because somebody lives a block outside of the, the town, they have no say about the park that they use.
That's not, that's not the point.
That's, that's what we're saying today.
No, it is not. Absolutely, positively not.
The, the point I'm trying.
Literally, exactly what we're saying.
No, it is not.
So then people that live in Foster do have a right to, to, to decide to, to have an input.
Park.
Exactly.
Public.
Right. And I'm not saying that that's not the case. I'm saying that, you know, I appreciate you taking the tally, but, um, you know, I'm not gonna, um, I mean, I could have a hundred and ninety-nine people vote and never, ever use that park, so, you know, that, that's an issue I have right there, not to mention the fact that they may be from out of town, uh, but come in to use it, and that, that's great and all. Um, but they can take their, they can go somewhere else and use a park too, and they, that town could take the risk of it, and we.
Well, and that's what they're doing right now. People are, people are actively saying, go down to Foster.
If, you know, everybody, I mean, it's amazing how everybody has found something to do. And that park has been, other than the things being torn down one day and one guy walking in there with his daughter and his wife yelling at him for doing it, uh, I think it's been pretty darn good, and everybody's found something to do.
Yeah, I commend the citizens on that. It really steps up.
Been, it's been amazing. And so, you know, for me to just say, and, and if you start looking at like California, didn't they have more cases today than they've ever had? Cause they're opening everything up again, and I don't, I just don't think it's a good idea, but, you know, it, I'm one person, one vote, and um, I think everybody's surviving, and you're gonna get, you're gonna get the big mouths that are just gonna complain that it's closed, it's closed, it's closed, probably because they have nothing better to do, and they'll complain and never go down and use it. And then you have the other people who are like, okay, let's build a model in the house, or let's play in the backyard, or let's do this, and let's do that. And they won't care whether that place is open. And then my other issue with it is that place is nothing, has been nothing but trouble, and all the good, wonderful people that do wanna go down there, I hear very often from them, I don't wanna go down there, cause it's such a terrible place. Um, it needs to be cleaned up, so. I mean, I have that issue beyond, uh, we don't have the manpower to, to, to take care of all this, so. But I'm, you know, Shane, I'm not knocking your vote thing. I'm just saying that I ha, I look at it a different way than you. So, and I, I will ask you to keep doing that, because it does help.
Okay, well, we'll address it on, on Thursday.
Yeah, if we have one thing. So, I mean, this discussion started with two members of council. Okay, and to Mr. Balyett's credit, he spent some time to review the regulations to an extent from the CDC. There's also the National Recreation and Park Association that's out there, because going forward, Governor Wolf is deferring to the CDC and deferring to these other places in a lot of, in a lot of ways, all right? Um, me personally, I, to do it the right way, this is what I would think that it would look like. There are forty-seven signs on the CDC website, and I will pull it up, and there are all kinds of things about social distancing and hand washing, and, uh, just informing people that COVID's a thing, cloth face coverings. So, from the regulations, what I gleaned, and Wilson, please keep me honest, good, bad, or indifferent, is that really what we should be doing is going out and getting those political style signs? Getting these printed up and sticking them in the ground for at least the hand washing, the face coverings, the social distancing, and the general code. And, and they should be in multiple areas of the park, so we don't stick them down there by SureSave, and then expect the people at the other end of the park over there to see it. Um, I also think that we, we should consider, uh, uh, somebody said something about hand washing stations. Hand washing stations are seven hundred and some dollars. We don't have seven hundred and some dollars, but guess what? The lead time on them is seventeen weeks.
I was just gonna say.
So, yeah, we'll be ready in seventeen weeks. There, it's impossible to get this kind of stuff.
You've got a fountain down there.
It's all, yeah, so we have, all right, we have the field, the field up at the Dela, we have the field at the Delacroce, it's an open field. We have the field at the Fourth Ward, it's an open field. We have the park, the park has some pathways on it. We have some equipment that's fixed, that's in there all the time. We have some other equipment that is, has still not been put up for the year. We're lucky, we, we would've had snow some years at this point in time, so. The only thing that I would probably be comfortable with is we're gonna have to spend this money on these signs. Like I said, the bathrooms should not be open under any circumstances. You're still supposed to be doing monitoring, right? Because could we have two hundred and fifty kids down there in a park on the first day? I think it's in the realm of possibility. Be, so who's gonna be monitoring that? Should the police be spending all their time monitoring that? We don't have money to pay somebody. Is this a rec board volunteer activity to do that kind of stuff? Uh, contact tracing, I hope everybody's heard that term before, but, uh, in places, you're supposed to keep a list of everybody's name, phone number, and address, because if somebody gets sick, you're supposed to contact all the people who came into contact with them there. Can we do that kind of contact tracing? Waivers, there's actually businesses, whether you work at that business, or whether you're getting a service at that business, who are having people sign waivers. And obviously miners can't sign waivers, so parents would have to sign the waivers. So, I mean, I don't care what anybody else is doing. In my mind, those are what the regulations say is supposed to be happening. So would we open up those fields and just open up the park that somebody could sit at a picnic table? Or they could walk through the park, you know, maybe, and then we see how that goes. And then after that, maybe do we open up the basketball courts? Because basketball is a contact sport, and you're close up against people. You're breathing on them, you're sharing a basketball. So if things go right in the first phase, then in the second phase, we have the basketball. And only after all that goes well, do we talk about hanging up swings and taking down the caution tape from the plastic stuff that little toddlers are gonna be going on, that, oh, by the way, now somebody has to go down there and, and sanitize it, um, at least once a day. So I don't think it's as easy as some of the folks who voted yes are making it out to be, respectfully. There's, it, it's a complex issue, and nobody could pretend to know, because none of us in our lifetimes have ever been through anything resembling this before. And my, we have forty-five cases in Freeland, according to the, the PA Health, and we have deaths of people in the one eight two two four zip code, including in Freeland. And I, and our numbers are lower than Weatherly and some other places like that, and I like to think it's because we've tried to keep people safe. And to Joe's point, I don't wanna see things spike up again. So if we do anything, I'd like to do it slowly. And I, I appreciate, I, I, you know, I wanna do something for the kids, but I don't wanna go full bore. I'm just not comfortable with that personally. I don't wanna have that on my conscience. So I'll shut up now. Thank you, everyone, for listening.
No, thank you, Matt. I respect that. And that's what, this, this is what work sessions are for. It's for us to all speak our piece and then make our vote the next week, without sitting there and messing around and, and going back and forth. Um, with that said, I do still have, I still have questions, because, you know, what is required and what is recommended? And, and again, um, the signs, are they recommended or required? You know, and, and it seems like they are, they're recommended, not required. That, that's what we need to figure out today, what we need to work on, and from this point forward, uh, until next week, be prepared to make a, make an educated vote on, because, and, and, and how we're gonna do this too, and how we're gonna do this. If we were to open it, how would we do it? And, and that goes for anybody. Anybody who is either for or against opening the parks. You know, you can't just, I, I don't wanna see anybody blindly have the excuse, you know, we can't sanitize it, so we can't do it. I would like to know, you know, why, the logistics of why we can't sanitize it, why we don't have an employee who's, who's free for five minutes a day. Um, you know, the, I wanna, I wanna.
Well, because we don't wanna bring back a part-time guy.
Well, if we had extra work, like I said, by all means, and if taking care of the park is part of that extra work, then maybe that's a good argument as to why we need that part-time guy.
But you, you know, it's also what Matt said was, you know, we, we just, you know, the issue is how much it has to be sanitized, and I, I don't look at it from my point of view of, uh, how much I know, or how much the next person, I, I look at it as, you know, the person, the kid down there that can't protect themselves. They don't know anything, you know, uh, they touch, lick, push, you know, do whatever they want down there and think, ah, I'm never gonna get it, I'm never gonna get it. And maybe they won't, cause kids don't seem to get it. But they go down there with their parents, and then their parents get it. And, and I'm not, you know, I'm for protecting the person who thinks they're too tough and cool to get it, and the person who's, who can't, who just doesn't know any better. I mean, they're just not, you, you know, they're not that advanced to know that they can get it, and I, you gotta protect them. And then the, I just think it's, especially with the numbers, the way they're going, it's just gonna be a nightmare come September, or this is, we're all gonna be back where we started from, and I just don't wanna see somebody get, I don't, you know, beyond the fact that you might die from it, who in the heck wants to feel like that, just getting it? I don't wanna, it's like the flu. I don't want the flu, whether I die or not from it. So, it's, I think it's an issue of, let's just, my, my thoughts are, just protect everybody who can't protect themselves or is too stupid to protect themselves and thinks they're never gonna get it. And then they walk all out of there, and they see the seventy-three-year-old person walking down the street who's going to SureSave and walk up and just happen to know them and say hi, and boom, now that person has it, and then because they're in the, the group that can die from it, they, uh, you know, they pass it on to them, and then as simple as that, somebody catches it, because we let them in the park. And I just don't feel comfortable doing it.
Joe, I agree a hundred percent what you said, and Matt, I agree a hundred percent with, with what you said. In fact, in fact, I would be willing to go out on a limb and say that I am the craziest, most, most, uh, most, you know, thoughtful person of, of everything, you know, going on right now. I, I, out of all of us, I'm probably, you know, the number one. Would, will my kids ever go to the park when it opens? Absolutely not, absolutely not. By, by no means will they go there. But is every other park around us open? Yes. Are there people who would like to take their kids to that park, whether it's safe or not? Yes. And it comes down to a question of, do we have the right to decide what is good for you, or, or not? And, and at some point, yes, we do, when we're in red phase, when we're in yellow phase maybe even, but at, at this point, I, I think we're at the point where it's, where it's pretty much, you know, if you feel comfortable doing this, you can, just be aware, you probably shouldn't. I don't think that it's a, you know, we don't think that it's the best decision, so we're not.
You're right. It's, it's their decision, but I like to be walking around saying, haha, uh, we're the guys who saved you.
Who, yeah, or, or have, you know, we have the, we have the zip code with the less, the least deaths and, and. And, and I agree a hundred percent with that. I agree a hundred percent.
Hey guys, remember one thing, when we, when this COVID nineteen started out, we were doing things before other communities were.
Absolutely.
We were ahead of the curve.
We took a lot of.
And I'd like to stay ahead of that curve, because you know what? I'm sitting here on my phone, listening to you guys, and California just enacted that any person going outside has to wear a mask.
Yep, yep.
Um, because their numbers are go, their numbers are going backwards. And, and I, I just encourage council, the public, and everybody, stay precautionary still. This disease didn't disappear, it's still there. You know, and I think, I think we should take a slow approach. You know, even though the state's giving us guidelines and CDC and everybody, take a slow approach. Let's stay ahead of the curve like we did before.
Wilson, what would your, what would your recommendation be as, as part of EMA, as, as part of all your training? What would your recommendation be for the parks?
My recommendation right now is I think we need to sit down and come up with a game plan, and do it at a slow pace.
Faces of red, yellow, yeah. Um, I agree, it should be.
A, as you can see, the restaurants, the bars, and everybody's gonna open up, uh, tomorrow, whether we like it or not, but they need to get back in business. But realistically, for a park with children, I'm very concerned, being a parent myself, you know? Because we know there are parents that just drop the kids off at eight o'clock in the morning, and they don't see them until five o'clock at night.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and that kinda bothers me.
Absolutely. Wilson, if there, if there was, if there was a step to be taken next week, what would your recommendation be for the first step in a phase? Yeah, I'm just, and again, it's just because in this conversation, I think you're the most qualified to, to ask these questions too.
Honestly, at this point, I'd wanna look at it a little further. You know, maybe open the middle trail uh, that people could walk through, but as far as the equipment and stuff, you know, if you don't have people to sanitize stuff, I wouldn't open it. You know, same thing like Matt said with the basketball courts. It's a closed contact sport. People sweat. They're exchanging fluids, you know, they're hitting each other, stuff like that. You know, they're not gonna be wearing. Right, we're not gonna be able to do it.
You know, let me, let me just add this. The CDC is recommending this, that, and everything else. And they are the federal government, and that, we're here sitting as a small little town discussing whether we should park or not. Uh, because we wanna, we're concerned about the safety of our citizens, and at the same time, the other federal agency called FEMA won't open anything, even though they could. Even though we could all get together and have thirty people in a room the way we need to, to train, they're saying, no, we're not. We're closed at least until August first. So, it's kinda odd that, you know, they're telling us, yeah, you, you guys go. I mean, I think a lot of this is more geared to, we gotta get people working again, as opposed to opening up a park. So I'm gonna look at it like that. If it's not good enough for the sister government agency to open up and do things, it's definitely not good enough and safe enough for the little tiny borough of Freeland to open up and put those. I mean, I can see them not caring about us. We're just a dot on the map to them, but I care about it, so I think it's just, you know, I'm gonna look at it that way.
FEMA can, and Freeland can. Absolutely, but the CDC at the same time is saying, you can open parks, here's how. That's, that's what they sent out. They said, you can open them, here's how to do it.
And when, when, when nothing works out with it, three weeks from now, they'll be saying, whoops, I probably shouldn't have let you do that. Just like they've done all along, so, but, you know, we could talk about this all night, so.
Yeah, let's, let's, everybody has something to think about to vote on next Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Don't call me ma'am. Anything else with the parks and rec? I think we covered enough.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, there, a person reached out to me, my contact for the, um, for the, the bands, the concerts in the park. He did have a question about, um, at, at some point, if we can reinstate them. He offered to, uh, play on the stairs of the park, and I understand we're, we're, we're. He offered to, uh, play on the stairs of the park. And I understand we're, we're, we're not at the point of even opening the parks. And I did explain that to him. Um, but I just like to keep everybody, you know, in, in the loop here that, um, he did offer to, you know, play on the stairs of the park and allow people to socially distance throughout the park to, to enjoy the music. So that's just, just something I'd like to put out there. Obviously, it's we're not at the point where we can.
You know what? That just, uh, rang a bell. Somebody asked me about a little concert maybe at Martin Square. So I'm not gonna get into that now, but, uh, that's something that they want to kind of do in the future. So obviously that's goes totally against what I would want, but you know, they're asking. So I guess we move on to whatever's next.
Okay.
All right. I have a question for Parks and Rec because it's kind of part of this too. Um, and it's, I guess it's the Mr. Balliet probably. I believe there were new rules, uh, formally put in place a few years ago. And then for some unknown reason, it was like impossible to get signs printed, which blows my mind.
Yeah, I don't know.
With one of those rules having to do with being under thirteen. So if we have rules that need to be posted, I think we should get them posted.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't know what the problem was with, with the signs. I don't remember if it was a purchase problem, whether the rec board was considering, you know, should the rec board pay for it? Should the borough pay for it? Is it building grounds? Is it rec board? And we went back and forth with that. And then we had a lot of other issues, uh, with the rec board in, in a short period of time, and we unfortunately never got to it. I will say that a lot of those new park rules are amazing and they're gonna, they're gonna fix a lot of problems. One of which, like you said, is, is, I believe it's twelve. Anybody under twelve needs to be there with a parent. And that, and that's amazing. That's gonna be a huge change to the way that park is, is, is handled.
Can you, can you get those rules out again? I, I don't know if I could find.
We, we should have them. Yeah, we should have them in the borough.
And we need them to get printed and put up like Matt said.
Yeah, I'm all for that, all for that. It was just, it was just a who was gonna pay for it kind of question. I think council was, was expecting the rec board to pay for it and the rec board expecting council to pay for it. Because, you know, is it, is it, is it something that benefits kids or is it actually just a, a rule set for the park that's run by, that's run by the borough? So that's, that's the question that came up. Who's paying for it? And then we never.
Well, maybe we'll just find somebody to pay for it and get it done and not have that be an issue. But it should be a much quicker conversation this time around.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm, I'm all for getting them up there.
And I, I mentioned it to Mary and I, I'm gonna contact her again, Mary Lloyd, about getting a rec board meeting together. I think now that we could do it safely, social distance wise to, even if it's ju- just to get their feelings on everything. So.
Yeah. And we do have, we have a lot of things that rec has to go over to internally, internally, as far as rec is, rec is run. So.
Okay. All right. If we're good, then we'll move on to new business and correspondence.
Yeah. So I'm not sharing my screen right now, but the first one is the parking spot in front of Woods Ice Cream. So this was kind of brought to me by the streets department and the police department. So, uh, Woods Ice Cream is seasonal business. At least they've been to this point in time. Um, and they're really the only business that I could think of in town, correct me if I'm wrong, that has window service. And, you know, sometimes the line gets a little bit long, you know, in normal times and people are coming right out onto the street. They have their little parking lot on the side where the exit's right next to the line. And, uh, I guess everybody ran it by the YMCA and they said, you know, should we eliminate that parking spot there? Not that we want to encourage people to be going out in the street. I think the line should be bending and heading down towards the YMCA. So, um, I'll be honest with you. Some folks seem a little bit lukewarm to it. I don't know if this is necessary or not, but it may be something that somebody wants to, uh, consider doing for next week.
Was this requested from, from Woods themselves? Or how, how do we get this, um, issue, this issue?
I, I think the streets department and the police department spoke to Woods. I don't know who the, you know, very first was to say to, to raise it up. But, you know, if there was somebody driving by and seeing it or what, I don't know. Maybe the, the police committee talked to the police about it.
They just want to remove the, the, the spot in front there? That's the.
Yeah. And not even like a whole spot, like probably like ten-foot section, um, just seasonally, it's no parking and just paint it off.
Yeah. I would, I would, my, I, and, and I'll just make it clear, an, an ice cream shop is obviously the best, the, the, the number one place in this borough that I'd like to make safe for especially children who go there by themselves, which happens a lot. Um, with that said, I just don't want to, um, I'd like to just make sure that it's okay with the businesses that are there. Uh, just to make sure that they're not gonna get upset that we're taking a spot away because, you know, you know, I just want to make sure that they're, that they're understanding of it.
Not only that, we do have to remember that's a state road. So we'd have to make sure that that fits in with their.
Yeah.
Just to put that out there, there was never parking there because that used to be a garage.
Ah, good point.
Yeah. No, there was never parking there. Not as long as the fifty years that I'm here.
It was oil trucks, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember it.
And then when it was the florist shop, then it was.
Yes.
And you have the issue, well, you can turn off front into the parking lot too. I think that's probably even more dangerous than that parking spot there. But, you know, I don't have a problem with fixing that up, putting that, you know, getting rid of that spot. So.
Sorry, twenty twenty.
John will be, John, John will be available next week to discuss it more intimately. Anything that I get is hearsay from him. So, you know, whatever. Um, twenty twenty census, I meant to be given this monthly reminder because the, the census is extremely important. When we want to apply for grants and things like that, it's very important that we have an accurate count. Right now, our self-response rate, I don't think the census takers have been going door to door is fifty-five point seven. So we're lagging behind the state average. So people, please go to twentytwentycensus.gov and complete it. You've probably got a lot of postcards, even if you're a renter. If you're a renter, you should still be completing it because it's basically supposed to be completed for every address. So please, people participate in the census. It will only help your town.
Absolutely. Okay, the robocall system?
Yeah. So, uh, to go back to the street sweeping, we advertised it in a newspaper in the time, same timeframe we always did. The ad looked okay in the happening section. We had it on the blog ever since we approved the sweeping at the meeting. Folks, please use the blog site, freelandboroughcouncilofficial.blogspot.com. There's a lot of information out there. And still it went badly. So, you know, the one thing is, um, you know, what could we do to get it out there? The water authority has their robocall system. They've been very gracious about using it for snow bans. But at the same time, the way that they manage it might not be the way that the borough would, would manage it in terms of whose phone numbers are on there and things like that. That's not fair for us necessarily to put the workload on them. If a house wants to have eight phone numbers on it, then then the borough wants to allow eight phone numbers, you know, we should do that. Um, the, the system that they have, and it's very hard to research and Google robocall because it talks about spam and stuff like that. Thirteen hundred and forty-nine dollars a year. Um, with that said, uh, the water authority did their robocall for the hydrant flushing and there's still a lot of people that didn't get it. So, I mean, at a certain point in time, how much do we kill ourselves with trying to notify people when maybe some people just don't want the information? And do we want to spend thirteen hundred and forty-nine dollars a year? Do we want to research ultimate solutions? Or, you know, what can we do? So maybe there'll be a motion for that, maybe not.
Well, you know, just, just to that point is, I think it goes to the amount of turnover in town and, uh, the amount of renters in town, since, uh, they're going to base their, I mean, I get five, six phone calls every time the water authority does something. I, you know, I don't mind, but the, the point is, it's because, you know, that's how many water bills are in my name. So if you're, if you're just a renter, you're not gonna get it. The homeowner is gonna get it. Some guy in New York's getting a phone call about the, you know, and I call my guys and I say, look, this is happening and that's happening. Um, so it would be the same way with stormwater because it's in, if we use the owner's name, it's, you're still gonna do the same thing. So I think it's, it's more of a, how can we get them to register? Uh, like we, we discussed this, I think I actually talked to, I was at a water authority meeting. We talked about this and uh, getting people to just give their numbers to the water authority and, uh, you know, for, for their situations, like the snow ban that they let us use. Uh, and then people who are renters who are here will get the message as opposed to just the owner of the house. So I think we're, we're, you know, that's just an uphill battle. We're never gonna win that one. And there's people just that aren't gonna get it. And I think we'd be better off spending our money with a big sign underneath the time and temperature or above it, whatever. I understand that sign can, was made so we can put the time and temperature a lot higher. And then underneath it, that just has the scrolling words going across saying, snow ban in effect, blah, blah, blah. And then also one up at the borough building would probably, and then using Facebook to our advantage. I think it'll be a lot cheaper and probably a lot more effective since, you know, we're only gonna be calling homeowners. And there are plenty of people that own more than one property in town. So that's my thoughts on that.
Uh, I'm trying to look for the post, but basically since January, I've been begging people for emails and phone numbers. I think I got thirty-six phone numbers and twenty-eight emails. We have a Google group that people don't join. I'm starting to lose my patience with people saying that they don't know something because it's like, whose fault is that at a certain point in time? You know, um, because certain people do have the information. We have the same people that join these meetings every week and, and things like that. And I think there's been more information flown out of the borough than ever before. But at the same time, you know, there's still criticism and some of it is frankly unfair.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if I miss something and screw up, it's my fault because I didn't look into it. It's not your fault for not, if you tried to tell me and I didn't, you know, I didn't get it. That's my problem. So I look at that way.
Yeah. And we're gonna have to have people provide us with their information because guess what? We don't have your phone number. We don't know who lives in every house and what their phone number is. And rained out as long as it was up, we only ended up with two hundred and some people signing up. So.
And I don't understand why, that was a great thing. Rained out was wonderful. I don't know why.
And we're maybe gonna have the same problem with code red is that it's, you know, people are gonna have to take some initiative at some point in time to do it. So please, if you have an email address, you could, actually you could sign up for the Google group. There's instructions on the blog to sign up for the Google group. And that's how I'm sending out meeting notifications to people and, and things like that. So, you know, if you want to know, there's ways to know.
Right, right. Well, if it comes up, it comes up.
Okay. And the FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah, I think, uh, in the interest of a long time we've been doing this, uh, if Wilson and I, if he doesn't mind and everybody else that wants to sit down and talk about, uh, FEMA reimbursement, uh, let's do that because I think, you know, with all this talk about cleaning stuff and buying all these things, I know Wilson's been on a lot of this stuff, but I've been, uh, uh, participating as a non-FEMA person in a lot of these, uh, discussions, Zoom things that they have. And there's a lot, a lot of stuff out there that maybe, you know, again, as I've said several times before, we can get you know, some of the money back somehow. It's not, again, nothing's guaranteed as we all know, but I think we need to kind of almost do it on our own as opposed to relying on, you know, maybe it'll trickle down from someplace else. But I think in interest of time, we'll talk about that. And anybody else will set up some time and talk about it all together if anybody else wants to join in. If that's all right with you, Wilson.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, good. That's it.
All right. All right. We're down to public input. Anybody who stuck with us, anybody have anything to add or say or comment?
I, I got a couple of things of the, of the Facebook stream going and there were some people commented there. So I just wanted to bring up their stuff. Um, the first is, uh.
Uh, just a question along those lines. They, they didn't, they didn't want to join in for the meeting and speak for themselves?
I mean, they had the opportunity to, but should we really turn people away? Because they're not in our Zoom meeting?
Well, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'm kind of under the, uh, I think they should, if they want to talk about it, let them talk about it. And I'm not saying, so I'm, I'm not saying for you not to talk about it. I'm just saying that, um, if you've got a complaint, uh, if you've got a complaint about me, come to me and don't tell other people. So if they've got a complaint, concern or an issue, they should come and explain it to us because maybe telling it to you and then bringing it to us, it comes through the wrong way. Um, or in a better way. Uh, so I think that they need, you should probably advise them, please, here's the number, call in and make your, your stance known.
Okay, sure. So my name's Shane Balliet. I live on South Street and I'll read all these as a, as a citizen, if that's, if that's the way that we really need to do this, which is ridiculous because it's, it's extenuating surfer circumstances. With that said, uh, so one person, well, I guess me, I, I uh, parking on Pine Street, uh, on cemetery side, there's a, there's an issue with that. Um, residents are saying that there's the drainage ditch and the roadside are being destroyed and chipped away along the, uh, along the cemetery there on Pine Street. Uh, I guess it becomes pretty tight to pass. There is no parking on the lower portion of Pine Street. And, uh, and they were just requesting that we, uh, that we look into that and maybe see if there's something we could do better.
Okay, they can, it can, uh, if they don't want to, uh, talk about it because they're welcome to call in and, uh, speak their minds, tell us who they are, which they're supposed to do, their address and name. They can write a letter to council and sign their name to it about.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
I know exactly where they're talking about.
So, uh, another thing is, um, the street sweeper's been doing a great job. Um, people are saying that it's, uh, doing a great job on the streets, making them look fantastic. And also, uh, the intersections are a lot safer for motorcycle riders. So that was a, uh, commendation. Uh, and then the, uh, the last thing here is from doing some research, talking to some people, uh, that, that know about this. As far as the weed killer goes, um, we may want to just double check with the Department of Agriculture. That's the people to talk to and make sure that we're doing everything right. Uh, Penn State does give out a, uh, they give out the certifications for using those things. I'm told by people who are certified in that, that the chemical that we're using, despite the fact that it is available over the counter for personal use in yards, um, that if it's being applied to a public space, there is apparently a list of people that we need to contact that may have, uh, uh, issues with that. There's people that, that can sign up on a list and I don't know much about this, so forgive me for any ignorance, but there's, there's people who their health may be affected by that and they're, and they're, they're at risk. So we actually have to call and notify them when we're gonna be using these chemicals. And then also, um, we're supposed to have signage up until, uh, until those things are, are completely dried. At least as far as I'm aware, um, and it does state on the, on the Penn State website where you can get certified, it states to contact your local, uh, PA Department of Agriculture, uh, your regional PA Department of Agriculture with any questions. I think we should just hold off on the, uh, on the spraying until we figure that out.
Okay. Is that everything?
Yeah, that's all I got here.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn the work session?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, one question. What, what is our plan for next week's meeting?
Uh, in person.
It is time to have.
Uh, do, I, I like, uh, the hybrid.
I do too.
Yeah.
That way you're giving people the choice, but we're there.
Right.
No offense. I don't want to be around you guys.
No offense to you, Shane. We don't want to be around you. So, uh, call in.
Yeah.
We do not have an option.
I'll make the motion to adjourn if that's all.
I'll second.
By Joe, second by Shane. All those in favor? I, I.
I.
Work session adjourned.
Have a good night, guys. Real good meetings here. So we got really emotional at some points, but you know what? I think we had a really, really good positive meeting tonight, honestly.
Take care.